I'd like to bring to order the Tiverton Town Council meeting of June 23rd. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Vote.
Roll call.
Oh, sorry, roll call.
Counselor Gerlach.
Present.
Counselor Ruda.
Present.
Counselor Shabbat.
Present.
Counselor Lambert.
Present.
Counselor DiMediris.
Present.
Counselor Pelletier.
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Roderick is absent.
Consent agenda: Approval of Town Council meeting minutes, June 9th, 2014. No executive session held. Received minutes from the following boards and commissions: The Cassidy Hills Cemetery Commission, Waste Water Management Commission, Board of Canvases II, Open Space and Land Preservation, Recreation and Beach Commission. Correspondence received and filed. The Cecil Group meeting notes of June 11th and 14th, workshops for the Cal Plan, Town of Warren Resolution supporting the municipal road and bridge revolving fund, CRMC public notice regarding applications of Mark Casey's Sunset View Drive to construct and maintain a residential boating facility, tax assessor approval of abatements. Any counsel would like to remove an item?
No.
Like to entertain a motion?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as listed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Madam President, I would move that item G3 be moved up at this point and be taken out of order, specifically reading Representative John G. Edwards regarding House Bill 7631, an update on legislative session.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Representative Edwards?
Good evening, members of the council. Thank you for moving up on the schedule. I came to speak to you about my House bill, which passed both the House and Senate overwhelmingly, and is going to be going before the governor's, the governor for his signature within the next week or so. I received a resolution from this council. I sent you all a letter regarding that resolution stating that you are, I believe, misrepresented about this particular piece of legislation. And my explanation was pretty clear. If the town of Tiverton currently is receiving, we'll use round numbers, $1,000 in income for a piece of property right now, and no one comes and develops that piece of property, the town of Tiverton will continue to receive and only receive $1,000, or the equivalent as it goes, as the taxes go up. But you'll only receive $1,000, this year, next year, the year after that. If the town of Tiverton allows a contractor to come in and build a house or a building on speculation, and offers them a moratorium, which this bill would do, for no more than two years, and they don't receive any money for the improvements until either the building is sold, occupied, or two years pass, then, within two to three years, the town would not receive the $1,000 anymore, they'd receive a sizable increase to the tune of almost $5,000 in income from the increase in taxes. There is no loss to the town, because right now, the town is only receiving the $1,000. If contractors don't come in and build housing, or do something on speculation, which they're not going to do, if they have to pay the, they have to pay the increased taxes on the improvements, then you're going to not have the increase in taxes. You'll also not receive the benefit of having people in this town go back to work. You'll also not receive the benefit of having building supply companies, such as PD Humphries, sell building materials for these properties. This bill is very different from what we put in last year. There is a clear sunset. We put into 2021. We're hoping our economy comes back before then, and the bill can actually sunset prior. But the state as a whole needs to look at construction, especially the housing construction, as the canary in the coalmine. Construction traditionally is always the first in a recession or a downturn, and always, always the last out. If we don't put our construction workers back to work in this state, we are never going to have a rebound in our economy. Our economy will stay, will remain stagnant. Putting buildings, putting housing back, having increased housing starts is a way to do that. I would respectfully request this town council rescind your resolution, and send along a letter of support for this particular piece of legislation to the governor, who is going to be reviewing it very, very shortly. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from the council?
Yeah, I do have some comments. And Jay, please do not take this personal, at all.
I never take anything from your counselor, ever personally.
Okay, that's very good. And I say that because, in your letter to us, you read, you said, "Either the members of the town council did not read the legislation, or simply followed the advice of the town assessor." I want you to know, and I dragged out my old notes when this was first brought up, I really did have a problem with the proposed legislation. The first issue I really had is that I didn't believe that the legislation, despite your arguments for it, would actually create a single job, or would result in the rehab of even one single property. I think to some extent, it was wishful thinking. But also, these are the points I tried to make, and they sound a bit legalese, I apologize for that. But for a builder, I think the taxes were simply, and are simply, part of the cost of doing business. They're a part of the cost of the investment by the builder. And if the property is sold, it would be my expectation that with spec properties put up by a builder, the taxes simply passed on to the buyer as part of the cost. And in turn, if you're rehabbing a property, or putting up a new property, the buyer, I would expect, in these circumstances, would then pass the cost through the mortgage. He would simply add it to his mortgage that would cover a period of 15, or 20, or 30 years. So essentially, what you're talking about in this difference in the tax base that we would have, you're talking about a cup of coffee a week. Let me just use the example, if I can, that you gave to us. And believe me, I would, it wouldn't hurt my feelings if you convinced me that I'm completely wrong on this. You indicated in the hypothetical situation in your correspondence to us.
And I did use Tiverton tax dollars.
Right, I understand.
In that bill.
You indicated that the person buys the property for $65,000, fine. You indicated that the tax for that property is $1,300, that's fine. You then indicate that the building that's put up on the property, or rehabbed, is $100,000 for a total investment before you get the tax considerations of $165,000. And then you assumed, for purposes of your calculations, that six months later, after completion, the property is sold for $205,000. Okay? The first, you know, I guess instinctively, and really knowing nothing about the business, it seemed to me almost prohibitive that somebody would get a 24% return after six months. I mean, that was my first problem with this, with the calculations. But if you were, let me get, let me continue with just the hypothetical. Using your numbers without consideration of this tax exemption, you would have a recovery of a profit of 24%. With the tax that we have today, and the tax that you're proposing, the tax on the complete house would be an additional $2,800. That's based on your calculations. And I'm going to assume, as you say, that there's a window here. The exemption can only last at most for two years. So I figured, okay, I'm going to assume, I know this is not possible, but I'm going to assume that the tax difference is $5,600. I'm going to put $2,800 times two. So now I have, the cost of the building is $165,000. That's land and building. And now I add $5,600 for that difference in the, in the taxes. So I'm up to, or I'm adding $5,000. Now, I'm up to an area of $170,000. If the builder didn't pass on this additional tax, he ends up with a profit of $34,400. Did the quick calculation, and I'm figuring, well, he's now made a profit of 21% in six months from, since completion. I'm not trying to be difficult, but I just didn't think it was realistic.
Okay, if I can just jump in here real quick, Counselor.
And if I can just finish on that, on that subject.
Let me just jump in real quick. Number one, I gave you very rough numbers, so to show you how the bill would work. The actual margins that contractors are using, commercial contractors use a 3% margin. House builders use a 5% to 6% margin. That's what they're making a profit, not 24%.
But that's what your calculations are.
No, I just used those to show you how the bill would work.
But here's my.
On raw numbers. But we're talking about a 5% margin. A guy takes his entire livelihood, puts his house up on the market, okay, for a bond, does all of that, and receives only a 5% margin.
Jay, I don't know that. In fact, what I do know is that, accepting the calculations that I've made from the numbers you provided in the hypothetical, I would think that if this is an investment, and it's a speculative building, the tax is actually passed on in the federal income tax as part of the cost basis for the investment. I don't know how it would be treated on the local level, I don't know how it would be treated on the state level, but I know on the federal level, it would be part of his cost basis, so that even the taxes that he's paying would have to be calculated, and would be part of his return on his, on his federal tax.
Counselor, I've come here for five years, and every time I come before this council, I've had either you or another council member chide us about our lack of activity to generate jobs and stimulate the economy. We bring forth a bill that will bring jobs and stimulate the economy, and what do we get? We get a resolution from this council, asking you, asking to have the governor veto it. I find that to be disingenuous.
And let me tell you what is disingenuous. You indicated that you're getting overwhelming support from your colleagues in these various communities. Let me point out that the tax that you're trying to eliminate is a local municipal tax. The money comes to Tiverton, the money goes to Portsmouth, the money goes to Little Compton. It doesn't go to the state.
If you don't make investment, Counselor, you won't get any money. That's the point.
And I won't be disingenuous, Jay, when you finally address what the real problem is in this state, and it's the state taxes, not the money people are paying on their property taxes, or not the money speculative, speculative builders are paying as the construction proceeds.
Well, Counselor, let me just, let me address a couple of the issues you brought up. First, you said that not one builder will take advantage, will take advantage of this, this bill. Actually, the Builders Association, State of Rhode Island, was one that, was one that brought it forward.
I can understand that. I would do the same thing if I was part of the homeowners association.
There is no longer, there is no longer building going on in the State of Rhode Island. Our housing starts are diminished. Okay? For every single house you build, every single house you build in this state, you will put at least one full person back to work, just in a house. That's full-time. You put back one and a half people peripheral. That's two and a half people go back to work, full-time. Okay? You said that this will only add the cost of a cup of coffee to someone's.
I'm using your numbers, Jay. Here's my, I'll give you my bottom line.
I used them out of simplicity to show you how the taxes would work, based on Tiverton numbers.
Well, I know, but first of all, I understand why state senators and state representatives would support a bill that's being pushed by the, by the, by the builders. That's number one. But secondly, isn't, if in fact, this would be such a benefit to the towns like Tiverton and Little Compton, why don't we just leave it to the marketplace? Because if your calculations are correct, I would assume that every town in this area would be rushing to get rid of these taxes, so that they'd have a competitive advantage. And none of the towns are doing that.
Because none of the towns have the foresight to do it.
That's what you say.
That's exactly what I say.
But what I'm also answering, Jay, and I'm not being disingenuous about this, I in fact, did read the bill, and I did in fact, think about it, contrary to what you say in the first paragraph of the letter.
Well, the bill has been very, very different from last year, Counselor.
I understand.
Okay? The sunset is very clear. We also added in existing facilities, existing housing, so that in the urban areas where we have a blighted community, they can actually go in and renovate the work, and take advantage of the bill at the same time.
Why don't those commute, those blighted communities do it right now and get a competitive advantage? Why doesn't Providence do that right now and get a competitive advantage over East Providence, North Providence, get a competitive advantage over Tiverton and Little Compton? They're not doing it because they've done the same calculation, the same assessment that I've done, and you and I are on the same page. I'd love to get more, more jobs.
I really beg to differ on that, Counselor. We don't appear to be on the same page at all.
No, no, we want, yeah, we want more jobs here, we want more income in this town.
You say that, but you have, you have an opportunity here to act, to act on that.
Yeah, but somebody can honestly differ with the assessment that you made in this case. And I'm not so sure, the mere fact that state representatives and state senators say that this is a bill that's going to serve the local communities is necessarily what I'll swallow.
Actually, it will. You know the money is spent by contractors, construction workers, spent locally, spent within a 10-mile radius of their home.
And how do you know they're not going to do it tomorrow morning, even without the passage of this type of bill? This bill is taking money from Tiverton.
Has any community done it? Has one community in the state done it? No.
Yeah.
No, they haven't. Not one community in the state has done this.
No, that's right.
That's right.
So what you're essentially saying, I think we have 37 municipalities, 37 municipalities are wrong?
39, actually, Counselor.
39, okay, then 39 are wrong. All I'm saying, Jay, the only argument I'm trying to make with you, is that people can reasonably differ on the outcome of this. And the mere fact that you're willing to do it on the state level simply means you're willing to shift the tax burden to the local municipalities. That's how I.
Not at all, Counselor. If you had read the equation, if you don't act on this, there will be no increase, because the property will remain vacant. You will consider, you will, you will continue to only receive the $1,000. That's it. It will never increase, because no builder is going to make an investment in a property that he has to outline the taxes on. This is going to give them the opportunity to take a break on the taxes, and actually build on the property.
Thank you. At this point, I'd like Dave Roberts to speak on, um, his.
Thank you.
On his opinion.
Good evening.
Go ahead.
Well, I really don't want to argue for or against the bill.
Please don't.
The only thing, if a builder's going to purchase a property, he's just not going to let it stand. Obviously, he bought the property for a reason, and has to build a house. The only thing that I really brought to this town council, so I do take exception to part of Rep. Edwards' letter, is that if this bill passed, which it has passed the House and the Senate, and last year, the governor did veto this, because he did understand that there would be a tax shift to all the residents. If we can't consider that new construction part of our growth, that growth typically would help offset any tax increase. If we can't consider that growth, then that means that if there's a tax increase next year, the year after, up into 2016, when this thing sunsets, I believe, there's going to be a, 2021, there's going to be a tax shift to each and every single resident. So that's what I brought to this town council, and that's what you believed, and that's why I believe that you voted to have that resolution sent to the governor, and that's why the governor did veto, I believe, two years in a row now.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I was just curious, do we know if any other, Representative Edwards, you might have the better perspective here on this, is any other communities taking similar action as to what we did, as far as passing a resolution, or submitting a formal sort of position on the legislation?
I know of five that did, and only five, of the 39.
Okay.
There could have been more, but I know of five.
There were one.
And I'm trying to figure out how best to formulate this question, and I'm trying to get a sense of, you know, I'm aware of certain developments that are underway in town, and I'm trying to think about, if that's the case, then if this bill is not retroactive, then those particular property, like, I don't want to use anyone in particular, but there are some developments going on in town. So if I'm reading this correctly, then those particular developments that are already breaking ground and underway are not subject to this.
That's correct. The bill is not retroactive.
Okay. And I guess, then it, for me, it begs the question of, of like, how much more potential development is there in town, you know, in terms of, you know, I, and again, I'm having a tough time trying to kind of articulate the question here, but, you know, if there were vast amounts of parcels to be developed here, then I think it would slightly change the conversation. But I know we here in Tiverton are kind of, we're reaching a critical max, you know, in terms of residential, there's certainly, and this would apply to both residential and commercial? This is not just residential?
Just residential.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, those were some of the, I remember having this conversation at the council level, and also, we talked about it at the Budget Committee at one of the meetings that I attended. And that was part of the conversation, was the, whether this bill was beneficial to Tiverton. And I think that's the only real equation we really have to focus on when we talk about a policy that's going to be implemented in town. And I think we came to the conclusion that it really might be more appropriate for areas that have those needs, and not so appropriate for, for Tiverton, where I don't think we feel as though we need to incentivize speculative residential development, even, you know, in, in looking back at the recent real estate cycle, where we have had a considerable number of either failed developments, or speculative developments that haven't sold, or, you know, the inventory is in a state of kind of flux. So that's, I mean, for what it's worth, that, there are a number of reasons why I thought that this wasn't particularly appropriate for the town of Tiverton, and that's why I voted the way I did. And I certainly appreciate Representative Edwards' efforts. And I certainly believe that it is appropriate for other communities, just not this one.
Any other comment? Entertained. No motion. Thank you, Jay.
Thanks, Jay.
Open public forum for announcements, comments, and questions. Barbara Pelletier, travel, tourism, state meals, tax report, and my town article. Hi, Barbara.
Hi, how are you? Hi, Barbara Pelletier, Barney Field Drive. By sheer coincidence, this was not planned, that I would follow an economic kind of presentation that, this is tourism, and tourism, as you know, is one of the biggest drivers, I guess, in the Rhode Island economy. As you heard Mr. Strickland and Evan Smith mention, that we are, we're quite desirable and all of that. And I have, I think in your packets, you have some thoughts that I had submitted a week or so ago. And in the meantime, I attended a Discover Newport meeting, plus I read the article this morning in the Newport Daily News on the people's vision of the future of Tiverton. And I was quite surprised that nobody had any great big bang ideas for making us grow, which is quite surprising, because everyone was thinking low-key, and not really into the future. There are no great visions, and there, there's nothing there. So I have come, this afternoon, I sat down and typed out these 10 points that I just handed out. We, I mean, the people mentioned that we should be like Bristol and Wigford and Historic, but I think they neglected to mention that both Bristol and Wigford do have their commercial areas, that we can't just have little main store, stores on Main Street stores, and all of that. I don't think that'll make us a success story at all, at all. So I think we should tag onto this opportunity for tourism. And if you notice, our meal tax receipts are still going up, and people are bringing actual tour buses in to eat in Tiverton, not just the Rhode Island buses, there's a group, and a wage tours from around the New York area that comes to eat, so how good is that? You know, they found evidence. And that led me into, talking point number two, actually. We cannot, we not only cook great food, we also produce it. And I went around town and looked at places, and we actually grow the makings of a Thanksgiving dinner locally, and we should capitalize, and we have a turkey farm, we have dairy products, we have meat products, we have potatoes and pumpkins, and even a cranberry bog. So how, how perfect is that? And we can maybe bundle it all, and have somebody come, a whole bunch of people come, and get a Tiverton turkey dinner, kind of bring it back home. But we have to get the message out there, that it's there, and few people know about it. So we should work on somehow or other communicating all of this, and please ask me questions. I don't just want to talk. Please ask me questions, if you have any. I might know something that you might want to know, that I don't know. And, you know, we have a fishing industry that used to be a mainstay in this community. It's sort of totally overlooked. So I thought that maybe once a month, we could showcase our local people, have, for instance, somewhere like the now-empty Gulf Station, which has a building, and maybe we can just start using it without it being totally repurposed, rebuilt, we can, and maybe we can, from that, learn what we want it to be, and invite anyone in town who wants to sell something, has some message out there on what they're doing, invite them in for like a little get-to-know mini cocktail party once a month on a Friday afternoon, or Saturday afternoon, or something like that. And I think, you know, don't charge them for a space like a farmer's market, just everyone come and enjoy. If you're driving by, stop and have a whatever. Now, we have a lack of money to invest in, in our, in some of our venues. And I was thinking, I went on a Little Compton town website, they make money off their camping sites, so do a whole lot of other towns. It seems to work, they have it, they have it fine-tuned, and I think if anyone is interested in it, just look up Little Compton Beach. And I did a rough calculation, we could actually probably, renting out maybe about 20 to 25 spaces at Supowatt and Fogland, we could maybe generate around $50,000 that would pay for some of our beach programs, but also could possibly have leftover money that we could invest in playgrounds down there, or whatever be needed, I don't know. But I think it's an idea. It seems to work for Little Compton. I don't think the people are largely different. It's, you have to have a self-contained unit, park it down there, you can only stay so many days, and all of that. We have historic sites, we have Fort Barton, maybe we can rent it. We have historic sites, we have Fort Barton, maybe we can rent it out to some of these reenactment people, and even if, even if we don't rent it out and just let them use it, they'll come to town and eat and pay a meal tax. We have Four River right next door to us. Four River has the battleship, and it has Lizzie Borden, who's still popular, give her credit. We are the nearest neighbor to Four River, we should be able to attract some people, hey, stay in beautiful Tiverton, enjoy our beaches, enjoy our this, but you're right next to Four River. We have good food, we have windsurfing and all of that, but we don't have a hotel. And I think that's one of our huge downfalls, is that we don't have a hotel. If we had a hotel, people would stay there, people would go to Four River, to Bristol, enjoy all of these things. They pay a bed tax, which is better than the meal tax, but they also pay a meal tax, so it's a, it's a double, a double kind of gift. Remember, the Marriott gives Newport about $1 million a year, which is not to be overlooked, and we're not going to get a Marriott, but we ought to have a hotel. Now, tourism is not a nasty industry, it's, it's clean, it makes ideas flow, we get ideas from other people, we grow mentally by just associating, seeing what other people like and don't like, how we are, and all of that, so I don't think we should be close-minded about that. I think, you know, very often the idea, well, we just want to stay local, I think grow a little. And if you think about it, way, way, long time ago, 100-odd years ago, we had the Stonebridge Inn, which had about 150 rooms, it made Tiverton a destination, the ferry boat dropped people off, the railroad dropped people off, and we're getting a railroad back, I guess, into Four River, and I think that's been funded, I was told, and there is a Block Island Ferry that runs from the Four River Pier through Newport to Block Island, which is, I think, about a $50 round trip or something like that. Unfortunately, it doesn't touch base in Tiverton, but I don't know if that can be changed or not, but I don't think the way the water works.
If you can swim fast enough.
Ben?
If you can swim fast enough.
It's a high speed, it takes three, I have it printed out, I can give you the information.
Okay.
Can, we're not allowed to ask questions, are we?
Yes.
This one's actually on the agenda.
Okay.
Can I?
Yes, sure, sure.
Mrs. Pelletier, first of all, I don't want you to think that, at least for me, all of your time and effort and thoughts and very apparent passion for all of this falls on deaf ears. You're here, week after week after week, you know, touting this anthem, and I think it's to be commended and appreciated. Just so that you understand, my perspective on this, I struggle, if I didn't have a job, if I didn't have other responsibilities, I would absolutely try to invest more time and effort in, to doing this, but I think we struggle in a community, and this is just my two cents on it, we struggle in a community that's largely run by volunteers, in the absence of perhaps, you know, from an organizational structure, a full-time finance director, or a full-time parks and recreation sort of, you know what I mean? We don't necessarily, I mean, it's not like the town administrator, you know, can slice his day any thinner to devote one twenty-fourth of his time to this sort of thing. And so I, I, I struggle with how to kind of push this stuff forward, and I think in the absence of at least town organizational structure that could take the ball and run with it, and/or a cadre of entrepreneurs who want to, you know, develop this massive network of local mom-and-pop sort of operations, I feel like we'll continue to struggle.
Yeah, and I struggle with the fact that we have an economic development who, who is largely invested, I guess, time-wise, who's just, and the money-wise, with, with the industrial park, and nothing seems to be happening there, that there should, and it's a slow thing, and I totally understand that, and the opportunity has to be right and so, and all of that, but there should be a small aspect of something that looks, and I, maybe this merchant association, which is slowly, I guess, getting formulated or something, might take the ball and set it rolling, but I think that will depend on whether or not they're mostly businessmen, mostly builders, mostly whatever they end up to be, that I think that would be, will be the focus of that business group that we had the meeting at the Four Corners about. So I struggle with the fact that, I don't know how other towns do it, I know Bristol has a very, very strong merchants group, we don't have a concentrated, strong merchant groups, and I don't really know how anybody will ever do that, and mostly, I think, up to finally, a few businesses getting together and clicking and carrying the ball, but I, you did have Evan Smith here, and you did have the man from the Experience Rhode Island, whom I had contacted last year, and then he saw some things that might be happening and took the ball, and did bring people in, but I don't really know, I don't know that it takes that much effort, I think it just takes maybe the cooperation and the willingness of people to look at things and easy permitting and, and I really don't know what the answer is, but I won't bother you anymore, I promise.
No, 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 I don't want you to take that the wrong way, no, no.
I didn't, and I didn't mean to reply that in the wrong way, I do know, I repeat myself, and it's amazing, I look up last year, oh gosh, I told them the same thing, nothing has happened. But it is frustrating.
Well, I think, I think what we have to do, there's, there are two distinct kind of themes that we talk about at our meetings with you, and it's, generally, I break it down into infrastructure and sort of market-driven forces, like the hotel.
Right.
This council has almost, almost has, I mean, we don't have control over whether a hotel.
I think you're wonderful, I think you're one of the best councils I've ever seen.
Well, I'm just saying, that those things are going to be determined by market forces, and to some extent, when we under, when we go through zoning a little bit, bit more in detail. The other are these items that you bring up about specific initiatives, and I think, you know, without saying that we're not engaged, I think what the council needs, and the boards and commissions that read these and, and really understand them, is some kind of actionable item, some kind of strategy for going for, it's, it's one thing to say that we have great food and people should eat here more, it's another thing to provide some sound and reasonable solution to, or, or a strategy that helps to reinforce that, and whether that's coming from, you know, your group that you're on the board of, or it comes from your observations.
Yeah, they have, like, Discover Newport has these restaurant rigs and all of that, and some restaurants in town participate, some don't choose to, because their volume isn't large enough.
But I think ultimately, the, when we just provide information, it sometimes kind of falls into, well, are you going to do it, am I going to do it, who's going to do it? And people have on boards and commissions, I think their plates are pretty tidy as it stands, and to add something that is a reach or a stretch, or really would take an amount of effort above and beyond what they're accustomed to, you know, because we don't have a tourism board.
No.
And so I think maybe we can work towards, in the next few sessions, having some strategy for how we take these recommendations and put them into a actionable form, something that we can actually put into practice, or try to.
Well, if you notice, my last point was that everybody now is connected with the internet, everybody seems to look for instant information on their smartphone. I think if we had an app that's current for the town, where people can self-post a farmer bringing in a crop, a fishing boat coming in, or something or other happening, especially at a restaurant, if they can, in real time, post saying, this is going to happen today or tomorrow, or whatever.
And I think that's a reasonable suggestion. I don't know how to develop an app, I don't know how to support an app, and I don't know who in this town would, so there's got to be some strategy.
I don't know how much it would cost.
Right, there's got to be some strategy that brings actual, actionable items that we can make a decision on, and we can push forward.
Well, I did ask, we can post through the Newport site, but that's not really the Tiverton side, although they have a Tiverton link. Maybe at a, as a beginning, as a no-cost venture into this, we can take them up on it, and they will happily show us the way.
And like, like I said, I think that's fine, as, as long as we have enough information to make a decision. If you want to put a proposal together that says, I think the town of Tiverton should start putting a link on Newport, you know, I think we'd be happy to entertain it, but unfortunately, we don't make decisions kind of quickly or without a lot of information and understanding, and especially since we're often directing the administrator to do something, or requesting he do something, we really need some concrete information about what that strategy might be.
Right, and I, I do know the burden on your heads, because in a sense, you're the stewards of the town and for the...
Could I add one for, for, for Mrs. Pelletier?
Sure.
It really isn't us. We only meet once every two weeks. What I, what I suggest to people who have good ideas, and I think you have some good ones, is focus in on one or two, that's reality, focus in on one or two, and I'm not trying to make work for people, but I would then filter all of that through Mr. Wosik, who's here every single day, and then he'll filter it through us and let you know what's reality-based. These are some excellent ideas, they really are, but there's so many of them that we can't really focus in on any of them, until we get an agenda, a, a plan.
Right, a plan.
And knowing whether it's, it's realistic.
Yeah.
And the only way we can do that is to go through our town administrator.
Maybe we should set goals.
We can't make a decision like that on the fly every two weeks, it's just not possible.
And certainly Matt has the scope and understanding of the town's infrastructure now, that can help narrow down that list to things that, you know, are short-term possible, long-term hopeful, and other, let's just say other.
Right.
So, that would be my suggestion.
And in the meantime, we made it to the AAA magazine, didn't we?
Oh, yes. And thank you for your, your great work, Mrs. Pelletier.
Linda Lawson requests approval to host Celebrate Tiverton Festival, July 24th through July 27th, subject to Recreation, Recreation Committee, Committee approval and all necessary permits. Hi, Linda.
The request has a different date on it.
It does, and I apologize for that, the dates are July 24th to July 27th, I have corrected them in the town clerk's office today. So I'm seeking approval to hold the Celebrate Tiverton Townwide Celebration once again this year, starting Thursday, July 24th through Sunday, July 27th. We're looking at the same calendar events as last year, kickoff on Thursday at Tiverton Four Corners with the grand marshal induction and reception. The shops at Tiverton Four Corners and the Merchants Association will also be staying open late that evening and offering some refreshments, so you people are more than welcome to come down and, and spend some time there. Friday, July 25th, we're still looking at acoustic music, the bonfire, as well as the flotilla. The only change we're considering this year is bringing the acoustic music from the gazebo on Middle to the beach area, if that works, to have everyone in one spot that year, one location that night. We are not forgetting about the gazebo and the importance of the gazebo and what it means to this community, so stay tuned for something in the holidays with some type of a Jingle Bell Stroll that we're trying to work on. The Yacht Club will also be doing the flotilla again like they did last year, if anyone's interested in signing up for that, they can contact Tiverton Yacht Club. Saturday, we're looking at the parade stepping off at 10:00, the exact same route, going from Judson Street and ending at Lil Bear. In the evening, Sandy Woods, again, children's storytelling, music, cookout with Edible Creations by Jerry, as well as stargazing by the Astronomers Association up in the field. Sunday, Sunday morning, we're looking at the 5K being held at the high school, the exact same route as last year, being sponsored by the Tiverton Athletic Department, and we're also looking at the kayak tour by Osprey Kayaks in Supowat in the inlet as well. Everything can be found on www.celbrateTiverton.org. We also have a Facebook page under Celebrate Tiverton, a Twitter account, and we are also on Instagram, and we are looking up at setting a Celebrate Tiverton app, so, we, we just mentioned apps, so that's, that's our next social media site, but we, we've tried to hit all of the others, because Mrs. Pelletier is right, that's, we have a few thousand followers right now up on Celebrate Tiverton from last year's festival, so that's how we're attracting them to this year. All of the information, as well as the schedule of events, the parade application, the road race application, as well as sponsor forums can be found there, and again, we will meet and adhere to Fire Chief's recommendation, Police Chief's recommendation, as well as whatever feedback and, you know, whatever we get from the Rec Committee as well.
Is there a concert at Sandy Woods also, Linda?
There is music at Sandy Woods, yep, there's storytelling, and then it will be followed with the sensation musicians, it's a different, we had a Cajun band last year, so it's a different band, but kind of the same, similar type music, and getting the crowd active and involved and danced.
It sounds good. Any comment from the council?
Mrs., Madam President, there's no further comment, I would move to approve the plan to hold a Celebrate Tiverton Festival, July 24th through July 27th, as outlined by Mrs. Lawson, subject to Recreation Committee approval and all necessary permits.
I have a motion in second, all those in favor? Good luck.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Susan Gill, EDC pamphlets?
All right, you have in your packet tonight some information that we put together, and that I wanted to distribute to the members of the council, and make awareness of the town. The first one is the Chamber Commerce ad that we did, it came out, it's next to the Table Conference, it's a whole-page ad, and what we focused on this year was discovering the arts in Tiverton, visual music, including Celebrate Tiverton, Sing Out Against Hunger. Anyway, so this was one of the first promotional events or materials that we did. And then we finished putting together the Discover the Arts in Tiverton, that's the brochure then to accompany it, so we were able to do a tri-fold brochure, and the inside includes all the different activities and events, all the festivals that take place down at Four Corners, we tried, we're very inclusive of, you know, different parts of town and tried to get everything in there, the Tiverton Chorus, we have a section for kids' activities that are focused on down in the Four Corners area, and then on the back are the art and artisans, and what those are is Rhode Island is now buy art tax-free, and since we have a lot of artists in this community, we wanted to promote them as well, and we felt that by promoting the, the tax-free status, that we weren't singling out individual retail businesses, but we're promoting the concept, so we liked to include that. And this was, 80% of this was funded through a grant of Discover Newport, we have 5,000 copies printed, I've distributed about half of those so far, in midsummer I'll do get the rest of them out, Newport, Bristol, the participating artists in here, and various places around town and in the area. And then going along with that was, I had some reprints done, this was the Discover Tiverton from last year, focusing on open space, we got an additional 1,000, so I have about 1,500 of those to distribute, and we like to let, you know, the community as well as people outside the community, the focus on economic development for marketing our town is to get outside dollars into our town, and I'd expect townspeople to support everything that goes on here. And then as a follow-up to when Catherine Lovell came and spoke, the South Coast Artist Open Tour is in July, so that's the last brochure you have, you see, it's a very big event, they have a great turnout, and I just wanted you to see that as follow-up. The Discover the Arts in the South Coast are both on the events page of our website, our town website, so hopefully everybody can get the information, and there'll be a lot of great participation this year. Any questions?
It's really, good job, Susan. It's really, good job, Susan. Public hearing and public presentation. Michael Mark Jean, public hearing on abandonment of a portion of Roy Street formerly known as Walnut Street from Crandall Road to Hemlock Street.
Hi, John Councilor.
Are those microphones on?
They should be.
Yeah.
Can you just get that mic a little closer? Yeah, no problem. Is that good?
Would you like to tell us a little bit about this?
Basically, we're just asking to abandon a portion of Roy Street. That comes off the Crandall Road that connects to Hemlock. The reason being is to install a driveway. If you're looking at Lot 335, the driveway would run over Roy Street, which is a paper road that doesn't exist right now.
Which lot?
335 plot, Lot 514, Lot 335 would be the driveway.
Excuse me, Madam President, I've just heard from someone that says they cannot hear in the back of the room, so we have to make sure we're speaking right into the microphones. And Miss, would you please...
Okay.
Good.
Okay.
It's slightly uncomfortable, but you got used to it.
Very uncomfortable.
What is the current, what is the current volume on this paper road right now? And is it...
The paper road is, I believe, 20...
It's not a road, is it?
It's not a road, no.
Oh, okay.
On a map, it's a road.
Okay, so no, it's not like it's getting vehicular traffic or...
No.
Bill, it would be impossible to put a car on that road, that so-called road. I went out there to take a look at it this afternoon. It's all wooded.
Andy?
Yep. If I may, just, a gentleman had approached the town about possibly getting an easement over the paper street for the utilities. And as you can see, Kate has prepared a color map for you with the GIS which shows there's no road there. It just exists on paper. It does go farther east, farther east of Hemlock Street, Roy Street exists on the ground, but it doesn't exist in this portion. There is actually someone else who's already kind of done that. They've developed houses on both sides of the lot and just kind of spread across it. This gentleman did the correct thing, came here, asked for an easement. Upon review of it, it seemed like this didn't have any use for anyone, and if we were using it, it would be setting us up for one of the many future problems with streets and maintaining, and that's why we're here tonight and advertise and having the public hearing. And all of the people who abut the actual street to be abandoned were served with notice so that people can come forward tonight and if they say, "Wait a minute, there is a need for it," you'd be able to hear them.
Mechanically, what would we do to remedy? Would it be an abandonment of the road and then it would split in half?
It would be an abandonment of the road, and it would split a half down the middle to go to the owners on each side. That's correct. And this gentleman owning pieces on each side would own the complete piece through there.
Where on this color map is 335?
Well, I think it's towards the middle of the block. I guess I would let, do you have a...
I have this map.
There's a color aerial.
I believe it's the lot. If you look at this way, you see a big property here that's developed. It's the second lot over from that.
To the west or the east?
From the left of the house.
To the west or the east?
To the west.
The west, correct.
Is that correct?
I believe so.
Okay. So, it would be, and so we're talking about the one just south of that, which is kind of rectangular and more massive. Okay. Okay, good.
At this point, I'd like to open up the public hearing. Is there any comment from the public? Any comment from the public? Any comment from the public? Come on right up.
Can you go to the microphone, please?
And just introduce yourself with your address, please.
Hi, I'm Paul Bolduk, and I live around that area. And we would like to know what they're trying to do. We couldn't hear you too well back there.
Okay.
Yep.
I don't think he has this long.
Okay.
So, basically...
I'm sorry, wait a minute. We need to, it's a public hearing. Can you go back to the mic, sir? And can you spell your last name, please?
B-O-L-D-U-C.
Okay.
And your address?
30 Bolduk Lane, Tiverton, Rhode Island.
So, all right. What is being proposed is the abandonment, that's a street.
Yep.
The area that's shown there is a street. And what is being proposed is the abandonment of that street, meaning it would no longer be a public street. There's obviously nothing there on the ground anyway, and now it would no longer be there on paper. People who own property on both sides of it, which apparently you own quite a bit, you would be, you would get the property to the center line of the street, and if you own the property on both sides of it, you would get all of that property. But you wouldn't be able to put a road in to develop those lots along that street in the future, because it would no longer be a paper street.
Now, once that road is out, now how would this gentleman get to his land that he's trying to get?
From Bolduk Lane, Lot 335.
Ah, you want to put a road through there?
On the driveway.
Uh-huh.
It'd be a driveway off of Bolduk Lane.
Mm-hmm. Now, how about Roy Street down further?
That would stay.
It wouldn't affect it, none?
No, where Roy Street exists, east of Hemlock Street, would stay as a public street.
Okay. Mm-hmm. Yeah. I got it on my map, yeah. It would be, yeah. Okay. Mm-hmm. I got no problem.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Is there any other public comment? At this point, I'd like to close the public hearing and entertain a motion from the council or any comment from the council.
I have a motion, but there's no comment. I move that we grant the petition to abandon a portion of Roy Street formerly known as Walnut Street from Crandall Road to Hemlock Street as identified and set forth in Agenda Item B1.
Second.
Motion's been made.
Can you just add a finding that the road has ceased to be useful to the public?
I can state on firsthand information it is totally useless.
If it ever was useful.
You couldn't drive a tank up that, through that road. It's just so invented.
I have a motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Jean, Madam President, I just want to be certain that the notice that was placed on the abandoned building was done by a constable.
It was. It was done by Constable Harris, the same people that served Paul, and I believe Kathy Bolduk.
If I could get a form on that, so...
We will need something back from the constable.
No problem. Okay, absolutely. Thank you. Thanks very much.
Next item, Chief Blakey, public hearing on proposed amendment to Code of Ordinance, Chapter 78, Traffic and Vehicles, Section 7871 and 7866. No parking along a portion of Russell Drive.
Madam President, Russell Drive in that area is hazardous as you come over the hill in both directions if there are vehicles in the roadway. Traffic would have to go into the opposite side of the roadway head-on into oncoming traffic. I'd like to have it posted, no parking, and also have a blind driveway signs erected in both directions.
I'd like to open up the public portion of the hearing. Any comment from the public? Any comment from the public? Any comment from the public? I'd like to close the public hearing and entertain a motion of questions from the council.
Was the only advertisement in the paper on this ordinance change?
Yes.
Chief, had there been any accidents in that area due to parking on both sides?
No, had several near misses reported, that's all. And I've personally gone out and had vehicles moved in both directions, taken off the street because of the hazard.
And you're talking, this is second, it's the crest of the hill?
Yes.
Okay.
So, anyone coming down the hill may encounter a car that has to go around the parked car.
Correct. If you would be traveling east and west, the people park on the north and south shoulders, and if it's a blind, they have to go in the opposite traffic lane head-on, and it is over the top of a hill or going up a hill, and it's a hazard.
Now, neighbors have called me with concerns that when an ambulance is coming down that way, they're always afraid that there'll be a car on the other side, because they're coming down so quickly, and it's a fear...
Correct. I'd also like to have the blind driveway signs erected to let the people know there are some problems coming over that hill, regardless if there are traffic, if there are cars...
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Regardless if there are vehicles parked there or not, the people who do live there will be, the people, the motors will be aware that this is a hazardous area.
Any further questions? Like to entertain a motion?
I move that we approve the amendments to the Code of Ordinance, Chapter 78, Traffic and Vehicles, Section 78-71 and 78-76, no parking along a portion of Russell Drive.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Next item, town administrator, public hearing on proposed changes to Code of Ordinance, Section 2-1, Fees and Fines Resolution.
Madam President, an annual ritual, apparently, here in the town of Tiverton, to review all of the fines and fees established by various ordinances or passed through via state statute into the administration of the town. On May 6th, I sent a memo to every department head or board and commission that has a fine or fee in this table. I filled in what I got back. I recognize that a great many of these fines and fees are established by state statute, especially with respect to the fire marshal's reviews and other public safety issues, and you have a number of traffic violations, moving violations that you've established through long practice and existing ordinance. The offenses are few and far between, so to go through those with a fine-tooth comb may not be the most efficient use of time. There are a number of live items, however, the planning board recommends not so much changes to the dollar amounts of their fees, but to some of the language so that the calculation of the fees is more accurate, more clearly understood by everyone. The second thing I would call your attention to is the cemetery commission is recommending an increase, fairly substantial increase, but there's a tremendous amount of backup in the documents they presented to you to support their point of view. The last item that I would bring up, and I think it may be worthy of a hearing of its own in the very near future, is recreation. Because this fine and fee schedule has been delayed in the past, it would have been done in the wintertime, and the numbers that were arrived at would have been part of the budget calculations going into the next fiscal year. Now, this is so late that we're actually in the recreation season. So, Saturday they had sign-ups, and now the fees are just coming before you for final approval. So, really what you'd be debating from a public policy point of view, the only responsible thing to do is to say you're going to be setting next year's fees, and the budget that is created for the Recreation Commission for next year will reflect those fee changes. I do think it's worth looking at, and in my time later on your agenda, I'll describe some of the activity we've had to engage in for recreation, but it really has been not a reinvention, but in some places, we've had to restart activities, and we've hired a new recreation coordinator this year who's done a very fine job of establishing a programmatic menu. I'd like to give them a chance to fully vet all of their proposals. One of the areas that makes it a little bit more difficult, especially when it comes to summer activities, youth activities, camp-type things, is many surrounding communities have those programs. The prices are all over the map, so there are actually policy choices that the council can make with respect to whether non-residents should be participating or not, because in some communities, it is permitted, and some it's not. Some places, there's a fee differential, residency versus non-residency. And then there's just the notion of how far do you want to go to subsidize activities that are actually very constructive for the youth of the community versus attempting to recoup costs, which would be a separate policy, would require budgetary calculations to a great deal of detail. I'm perfectly happy to supply you with those, but it's a different approach than has been taken in the past. In the past, the fee was simply to lock people in, make sure they were serious, and that they would attend. So, my recommendation is to, as we go through the public hearing, is to think about maybe dealing with recreation separately, but perhaps giving cemetery and planning and some of these other entities the guidance they need.
Now, Matt, the lines that do not have a red, does that mean that you had no feedback from the departments or the commissions?
Correct.
So, this...
In some cases, though, you know, I would get a blanket. Well, those are all set by state statute. Unfortunately, that doesn't help me, because when I go through, what is this, a 14, 15-page document, there may be a couple that are local and all the rest are state, but unless there's specific feedback, I can't help it.
So, at this time, this, excuse me, at this time, this list is incomplete, because there's a lot of commissions that didn't weigh in.
That's correct. Or you could simply say, "You're going to take that no change and copy and paste it through all that whole slide," because when I went, I did go through it carefully, and I didn't see anything that jumped out at me as being highly unusual and begging for a change, except for recreation, where you have new programs and you're really starting from scratch.
Anyone else?
I mean, I support taking recreation separately here, kind of given all of the moving parts and the need to bring some kind of control over that. I will echo your sentiments. I'm the new recreation coordinator. I'm seeing that stuff come through my kids from the school. I'm hearing a lot of positive feedback from the parents. So, I do think a year's worth of enrollment data and some additional time to do benchmarking against neighboring communities would be beneficial towards a broader discussion about how best, what sort of policy, what sort of kind of position we want to take as a community to support that sort of activity. You know, it's ironic, because I was just talking to someone earlier this week, and they commented on what a great deal the town program is, because they're getting eight work, eight weeks of, I think, you know, basketball camp for 75 bucks, or whatever it was, right? And so that, I mean, that's really positive, because whether you like it or not, some, you know, it costs money to participate in these things. So, I'm totally fine with pulling that off and talking about it. I do have a couple other kind of line item questions here that I just... So, if we pull off recreation, does that mean we're talking about beach fees now, or are we going to talk about beach fees at another time?
Well, it's a public hearing, so you can discuss it if you want, and then it'll give us something to go on for a decision point.
Okay. I will save that to my last comment, then. So, top of page four, litter, first offense, not less than $30 nor more than $300, subsequent offenses, not less than $100, more and more than $500. You know, litter and trash and so on and so forth has come up as a topic of conversation of late. I don't know how these dollar figures benchmark against neighboring communities, but I would be in favor of a stiffer penalty, especially on a first offense. You know, I guess if someone's going to litter, they're going to litter, and I think on paper, there is, you know, some value to be had with a higher first offense as a deterrent. What that is, you know, I don't know if it's 50 or 100 or, you know, whatever. What that is, you know, I don't know if it's 50 or 100 or, you know, whatever it is. So my next comment was with regards, or my next question was with regards to page five, 123, fourth item down, junk dealers and junk yards. How do we distinguish between those two? I don't know if anyone, I mean, I got a junkyard that's vehicles and all that stuff as opposed to a junkyard which is, or junk dealer which is non-vehicular junk?
Secondhand stuff.
Would that be like the...
It's a, it's secondhand.
It's the same fee because the state law lumps it together.
Okay.
This is what, whether you're selling, if you're involved in buying and selling secondhand materials, you are a junk dealer, whether that's junked cars or 1935 Bugattis or 65 Chevy Novas, it doesn't matter whether it's just junk or fine French antiques. If you're buying and selling used goods, you're lumped together in that category.
Sure. Okay. My next question is top of page seven, second item down, minibikes violations. What's a violation in terms of a minibike? So is that riding on the street?
On the street.
Okay. And is this something that's set by the state, or is this us?
No, that's you, and that's in your general, in your code of ordinances, all of your general penalties refer back to one section, so that's section 1-7.
Okay.
That would be set by municipal court using the judge's discretion.
Okay. The commerce, so page nine, about halfway down, commercial plan review based on construction costs for the fire department, is this, are these rates, are these set by the state, or is this us?
Nine.
Yes, sir, those are all set by the state. We're following the state code.
All right, so there's, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. And then I guess the only other thing I would like to talk about is the beach fees, if we can.
I would too, but I have a bunch of nitpicks.
Maybe we say beach fees until the end.
Yeah. I'd just like to comment on Councilman Grillax's reference to litter, because I'd like to suggest to the council, this is a nuanced question. Litter would include, in my mind, fish carcasses at public beaches. And would you put that in the same category as litter on the side of the road, guy throwing, going down Bogomash Road and throwing up, sort of can out the window? Or would you create a different category if somebody took spent motor oil and left it on the north side of Three-Rod Way at Fodlin Beach, which is a conservation area in town? Those areas of nuance would justify different levels of fines, in my opinion. And I would hope that we'd be able to think that through when we go through litter in particular, because if we're going to try to get a handle on what goes on at Grinnell's, that would be one way to slice the apple.
Sure. I support any approach that tries to get a handle on that.
Mr. Palatier?
Okay. Okay. Let's start with page one. The questions that I was hoping to have answered were a lot of these sort of things we do every single time we look at this, and this is my fourth time going through this. And it happens to be the same kind of, I still don't have a comprehensive understanding of what fees are set in reality, what fees are set in, I just grabbed it out of the air, and that seemed like a reasonable number at the time, when it was last changed. And so, you know, I did send a request, and, you know, that's the request you sent out about a month ago, to get a real handle on these, and unfortunately, I still don't have a firm understanding. So presumably, the mooring fees under current fee or fine, we have no change, I imagine, or just no response, or what?
No, we received a response today, now the chairman of Harbor is here, if you want to ask a question there.
Oh, Bruce, good.
Good evening. My apologies for the tardy response. The mooring fees, the fees and bills that were sent out in December, because our charter requires that they go out by the end of the year for the 2014 season, this season, are same as they had been before. Our commission had recommended an increase in the fees two years back, actually, three years back, because we wanted to fund the operation of a pump-out boat. That has not come to pass at all. So the actual recommendation of the commission is that the mooring fees be reduced by that, because the mooring fees are based upon the concept of a service or use provided to those people who are getting the benefit, namely, the use of the waters of the town of Tiverton, so that that would offset any impact it would have on non-marine-oriented individuals. In fairness to those who are in the water, on the water, and using those services, they have not received any of the benefits associated with the operation of a pump-out boat. So the commission recommended a reduction in those. I also sent a letter to the administrator, a little bit of a challenge letter, in that we have in the past two years applied for a grant and received a grant from the state with regards to acquiring a pump-out boat, and two things have occurred. One event was, we don't have the balance money in our budget for capital expenditure, therefore, we can't justify it. And then the other one was, well, we're not going to give you operational money for it when we actually had a free pump-out boat being offered. That, combined with a slight increase in the transportation costs, killed that deal. So you do have some feedback on the mooring, actually, the prior letters had come in well before your inquiry. We are a profit center for the town to the tune of about $30,000 or $40,000 positive. The services provided are well worth having. We have, you know, an avid harbor master, we are active involved in that. One of the things that we're going to be undertaking is a review of the mooring fees, specifically, we have a small subcommittee that's been put together, and indeed, Chris Claridan of my committee, commission, is actually going to be speaking to you as a private citizen and a commercial fisherman, to try to put forward a point that he wants to put forward, and obviously, the subcommittee will be, you know, reviewing what he says. But that's our recommendation at this point, unless this committee, this council, can say, why don't we put into our budget a capital balance for a pump-out boat? The grants are typically two-thirds of the cost of the boat, boat's running $75,000. Your contribution would be $25,000, the state's would be $50,000. We don't want to apply for another grant to only say we're not going to take it again, because when they commit money to us, it means it's deprived of somebody else, it will lose credibility. I think it's well worth having this, this service. You'll hear me bang this drum for quite a length of time, until I'm no longer on a commission, which possibly this evening might be the end of that, but I somehow doubt it. But I hope not, I hope not ending. But at any rate, that's where the commission stands at this point.
Thank you. I think when we have that conversation, because I imagine it's going to be, and there's no rush to do it, because we're, any changes we would contemplate wouldn't be in effect until, you know, December of next year.
December, 2015.
So, but one thing I think I want to understand a little bit better is the categories and the buckets we put people in, the residential, or resident, you know, personal, commercial, non-resident. I just, I think when we get to that point, and I don't think we've ever really talked too much about it.
No, it's never been segregated, indeed, that's what Chris wants to speak to, is the concept of resident, commercial versus non-resident, commercial, and the equity of that.
Yeah, I've been hearing those kind of comments in the last few months.
That's a valid point in my book.
Yeah, okay, great.
Thank you.
The others, let me see, let me get to, yeah, page four and five, I'm going to lump together because they're all very similar. They're mostly the licenses for retail trade or commerce or the like. And I wanted to understand whether, where these were set, how they were set, and if they are, I know it says Chapter 58, Section 58-whatever, and, but we've got, the ones I've highlighted are Peddlers and Hawkers license, which has a fairly complex fee schedule, fee structure. The flea market license, junk dealers and junkyards license, vic drilling license, antique license, holiday license, and private detective license. And they range anywhere from $50 to $350. I'm sorry, $10 to $350. And it doesn't, on its surface, appear that there's any real rhyme or reason. We charge, a flea market license is $350, but a junkyard is 200, a vic drilling license is 50, holiday license, which means you can operate on Sundays and holidays, is twice that, it's 50, so you would, in essence, double your fees for doing business on a weekend, and the private detective's license is 150. Where do the, where is the basis of these fees come from? And if it's state law, are they, are we following that? And if not, does it cost $150 to administer a private detective's license, but only $50 for an antiques license? You know what I mean?
I believe most of these do come from state law, and yes, private detective's license, we, police have to do a background check first, which they don't do for a vic drilling license.
So.
Why don't I pull you the state laws on this? And some of the fees have, because they were increased two years ago, so they were debated at that time and increased, but we actually do have copies of the state laws on this that we filed. Why don't I get you all those? Because some of these fees you can, you do put in, I believe the flea market one was one we increased.
I would like to know the ones we can change and the ones that we can't.
Well, the state does have, some of them are, the fee shall be X, some are, the fee shall be up to X, and we've set them in the past.
Right.
I believe we've set most of them at the maximum state fee.
And, you know, without getting snippy and being a petulant child, that is what I wanted to know tonight, and that's why I asked for it a month ago. Landfill regulation and street and sidewalk excavation permits, you know, the same, I, there's no real, there's no real basis. It doesn't give any information except that it's $100.
No, and that, you should have gotten back up, because the department head wrote a memo.
Right.
Do you need an explanation for that? Or was in the memo?
If you want to give it, it's fine.
Yeah, we did check with that around all the surrounding towns, the numbers varied substantially. It really reflects the costs of us reviewing the permit and maybe going out a couple of times to review the excavation, in the case of a permit to do a, you know, from a street excavator. And otherwise, the license, again, we checked with other cities and towns, some had zero, some were quite higher, and we felt that that really covered the cost of me researching their background, researching their financial records, and anything else to recommend approval or denial. So it's within reason, and it's not outrageous by any thought.
The next one, thanks, Steve.
Okay.
The next one is on page seven, it's the zoning board of review application for appeals, special use permit or variance filing fee. When we had the same conversation last year, I asked the question, where does that come from? I may remind you that I never got an answer, but it's the fee below for each of these, $230 for a special use, $230 for a variance, and $115 for appeal, plus the cost of advertising, which is a deposit of $500 for notice and whatnot. We have no backup as to why those numbers are what they are. No, okay. Do we, do we anticipate getting any information on why those numbers are the way they are?
Could I suggest that we maybe table, well, that we get back up as we requested on what state law, what isn't?
Those are not state law.
I know they're not.
They're set locally, and I can't tell you, I don't know why they are set like that.
No one has ever been able to tell me, so I...
Yeah, I think what we're getting at is, like, we want to have a more in-depth conversation. Part of that is getting the facts straight, part of it is knowing what's set by the state, what's set locally, for anything that's set locally, what, if any, sort of historical context do we have? Brett, correct me if...
No, that's exactly what I asked for.
You know, so that we can have a thoughtful
Productive?
Productive conversation on this, so that we can try to get back to some level of states.
I mean, you know, it's, this is the way we've been doing it for a long time, I presume, it's four years since I've been on the council. But I just, I take this, this is a very important component to the way people do business in the town of Tiverton, and the way people conduct their everyday kind of residential development lives in the town of Tiverton. And in order to make a policy or to affirm a policy, I think it's, it behooves us to actually understand the policy. And I do not understand a lot of these fees and whether or not they're justifiable, especially when we talk about zoning and planning. Because if it's $730 for a variance, just the ability to actually potentially get or not get a variance, I want to make sure that that's an appropriate fee we're charging someone, and it's not an overly burdensome fee that then causes people to say, you know what, I'm not going to bother getting a variance, I'm just going to do it, and then if somebody catches me, you know, I'll deal with it at that point. That's, I think that's all I've got, and it's my own, my grumbling for the night. But I agree with Bill about talking about, I think there's benefit right now to discuss, not right now, but tonight, discussing beach fees and potentially even ball field fees, because I don't quite understand that enough, what I yield.
Is that, where is that?
The last item on the recreation schedule, it says ball field fees, second page, non-resident games and tournaments, $50 a game or $100 maximum.
I'm sorry, I was trying to ask, where later in the agenda are we scheduled to talk about recreation stuff?
Oh, we're still, right now. We are in that, I think. I think it's all part of the fee schedule. Okay.
Let's start with beaches. Okay.
Would you like to start with beaches?
Sure, I'll jump right in. So I think folks might remember that last year, I did a bit of research, kind of benchmarking where we stand against other communities, and tried to put forth some recommendations for increasing certain fees as it related to non-resident use of our town beach facilities. That was not endorsed by the recreation committee at that time, and so it was with interest that kind of reviewed the new, or the most recent recommendations here for the beach fees for Grinnell's and Fodlin. And so for those who don't have a copy of this, the fee schedule is broken out by weekday versus weekend and holidays. Of course, for Tiverton residents, there continues to be no charge there. However, for non-residents, the weekday fee as proposed is $5, and the weekend and holiday fee for non-residents is double that at $10. The weekday fee for campers and RVs is 15, and the weekend and holiday fee for campers and RVs is 25. The season pass for residents is no charge, but for a non-resident, it's 100. And so I attempted to kind of go back to the benchmarking I did last year to see if rates had changed with some of our neighboring communities in Portsmouth and Middletown and Newport and Little Compton. And rates seem to stay kind of generally where they were, you know, basically averaging around $10 for a weekday fee for non-residents and a $20 weekend non-resident rate there. And last year, the argument was that, you know, there's a risk, well, it was twofold, if I remember correctly, is that our beach if I remember correctly, is that our beaches are not of the caliber of, let's say, Middletown and Newport beaches, and then, you know, we might run the risk of not generating as much revenue if we increase them substantially. So I wanted to revisit that conversation, because as I think about this, and my family is an avid user of Foggland Beach, and we are there at least once a week during the summer, and my argument is, sure, we might not have the waves, might have, not have the caliber of waves and ocean activity as a Middletown or Newport, but I think we have a pretty darn good asset on our hands when it comes to both Foggland and Grinnell's, and we need to be able to fund their maintenance and upkeep in a way that reflects the caliber of community that we want Tiverton to continue to be. I was there over the weekend, again, you know, again, there's, you know, there's the whole issue of trash and littering, at least, you know, the restroom facilities are, they're rough, they're rough, and I think, you know, we are trying to bolster tourism and getting people to come enjoy the amenities that our community has to offer, and I don't think what we are offering in terms of the beach amenities is of the caliber that I think we want it to be. And so we should be able to arrive at a fee schedule that allows us to fund those adequately. So I guess, all that being said, I would advocate for a higher non-resident fee, perhaps of the caliber of $10 during the week and $20 during the weekend. And I would certainly advocate for a, potentially a higher rate for campers and RVs, along with a discussion of, and perhaps this is at another time, but trying to figure out where we properly park the RVs and campers, because what you find is that you have RVs and campers coming in, they park parallel to the road, all up and down, at least at Foggland, and they're tying up parking spots for other people. Now, you know, in any case, that's my two cents on the beaches, and, you know, certainly open it up, interested in what others have to say on it.
Bill, I just have one comment. I really have thought of that particular issue, and I do remember your comments, and I think I've thought about it every day, because I drive past the old stone bridge and I drive past the gas station every single day. My suggestion is, that whole area down there is going to be a completely new world someday, perhaps in the next year or so. What I, I really came to the conclusion, although I certainly would defer to your judgment on this, that maybe the appropriate time for looking at the fees for the beaches and making that a discreet issue that we would discuss, is maybe next year, when we actually see, people can actually see something happening on the ground, when we see the gas station gone, when we see the new plans put together by Roger Williams, when we see the pier under reconstruction, that might be the time where people say, gee, that's a place I want to go, rather than, and I know a lot of people do this, they just cross the bridge and they go over to the beach at Portsmouth. So I think when we make it a real attraction, that's going to be the time to take another look at these fees and make sure they meet our expenses.
It's a great point, Jack. The other request that I would make is, I would be very, and I don't know if we track this data, but I would be very interested to know, have data over the last two to three seasons with, you know, how many non-residents have come in versus residents. I don't know if we track volume coming in, I mean, we must be tracking non-residents because we're getting dollars in every day, but I don't know what the bookkeeping, what sort of detail we have on that bookkeeping.
I'll just throw an anecdotal story into that. Anybody that, what Jay said made me think, I live right around the corner from Grinnell's, and I drive by it frequently, and I don't often go there, because I'm not a beach person, but I do a couple times a season. And the last night, I walked from my house down to Grinnell's Beach around 6:30, and there were two cars from Rhode Island, and I stopped counting after 18 from Massachusetts. But I think if we don't start paying attention a little bit more, and I'm not blaming people from Fall, from Massachusetts, wherever they may come from, but if we don't start paying attention to that as, and treat it like an asset, in a year or two, there's not going to be much left to it. The amount of trash that was blowing around the beach in the water, the amount of dead fish I saw, the general atmosphere is not pleasing. And so while I think we have, I think the weekends and the weekdays are probably very different, I'm not around during the week, during the day, but I think addressing these fees, an increase in these fees would address some of those issues. It's costing us an awful lot of money this past, this season to rehabilitate, for lack of a better term, and fix broken plumbing and vandalized things, and pick up trash and dead fish remnants, and it just makes for an unpleasant environment that ultimately, even I think when, I don't want to get to a point where, when we do have a real asset in that, that abutment redevelopment and the gas station redevelopment, and the whole sort of area being reinvigorated, that people from Tiverton won't, they'll be so, have such a bitter taste in their mouth of Grinnell's, and I tell you, it was not, it was not pleasant. So I recommend anybody that hasn't been to Grinnell's to park their car and get out of the car and walk around one of these weekends, and I think you'll see what Bill and I are talking about with regard to the litter and the need to somehow just get a handle on that place. It's, I don't want to be disparaging, but there were cars parked in every direction. I don't know how anybody got out of there last night. There were tents set up all over the place, there were plastic cups blowing around, it was just, it was out of, like, I don't even, it was a bad dream. I don't even know what to, how to explain it, but I think we need to start addressing some of those issues, and, you know, I think ultimately, when I look at it, if there are fewer out-of-town residents regularly coming to the beach, I think that only helps us a little bit, gives us a breather, we can keep it up a little bit easier, you know, we're not spending a whole day on Monday picking up trash, and, I mean, just reducing the population of users there. And I don't know what the, what it looks like throughout the day, I don't really know where our hotspots are, when people come in, when people leave, so, but I absolutely support, I don't understand, because I don't, I've never seen it, the camper RV, I don't know if it's a daily thing or overnight thing.
It is daily, I mean, you can't, you can't stay over.
Okay.
You can't stay over, it's a daily thing, but I mean, it does tie up other, I just think it would be good to have a designated location, at least, perhaps at both beaches, where it's relegated for RVs only, and they can open up shop and enjoy themselves.
I think that's reasonable. And, you know, just one last thing about Grinnell's, there were people actually parked on the beach yesterday. They had driven around the big poles that had, that separate the parking area from the beach, and, you know, I was kind of scratching my head thinking, how did you think that that was an appropriate place to put your car, you know, high tide's going to come, but anyway. So I support taking a look at these fees, and I don't think 10 and 20 is unreasonable.
At this point, I'd like to open it up, this hearing, to the public.
Good evening. John Codero, 19, Blueberry Lane, and I am on the Recreation Commission. First of all, regarding the fees, I think that non-resident fee will cost you some traffic through that beach, some of the non-residents. You can go down to South Shore for $15 on the weekend, and it's, you know, it's.
It's actually 20 now.
Did they raise it to 20 on the weekend?
Yes.
Okay. To try to compare the two is like trying to compare, you know, my boxing skills to that of Muhammad Ali. I just don't think it's there yet, and even raising these fees doesn't guarantee we're going to have, be able to use that money for the beach. The money for these, these fees go into the general fund, and the Recreation Commission's budget, which is the budget that funds the repairs and upkeep of the beaches and our recreational facilities, are subject to the, to the budget committee's recommendation, this council's recommendation, and whatever budget gets, gets approved. And it's a shoestring budget. Currently, the beach pretty much pays for itself as far as paying the employees, but we rely on the generosity of the taxpayers and whatever budget the Recreation Committee is assigned each year to try to maintain and upkeep that facility. And as far as the trash, I don't think the traffic, the amount of people using that area to fish has changed, but something has changed. So I think the council needs to, and the town administrator needs to take a look and see what has changed, that this year, all of a sudden, there's mountains of trash blowing around, because in years past, that wasn't the case. And I don't think we've had, you know, an exorbitant increase in the amount of people fishing there, people have fished there for 50 years. I don't think that, the amount of people using that facility for those purposes has increased. Something has changed, but I don't think it's the people. I think it's the maintenance of the facility, and the amount of times the facility is maintained by the town. Trash historically was picked up every morning during the summertime, and sometimes on the weekend. So I think that's what has changed, is our approach to maintaining the facility as far as trash goes, that's, I'm just strictly speaking trash here. I don't think it's, I don't think we're having twice as many people there, and the new, you know, those additional people feel like throwing their trash on the ground. I think the barrels are being filled, and then they're being overfilled, and then they're being piled around. And the residents of this town, the people visiting that facility, cannot control that. If the barrel's full, they're going to pile it on top, and it's going to fall off. So that's my two cents. And as far as the ball fee fee, historically, when anyone wanted to use one of our recreational facilities, whether it's a soccer field, a football field, not a football field, the town farm, the casket, anything under the jurisdiction of the Recreation Department, not the high school, or the school department, they simply checked for availability and they were allowed to use it. What we try to do is to generate a little bit of revenue, and we proposed and passed, the Recreation Commission did, that any nonprofit can still take that same approach. But if it's a for-profit league, then we were asking, we were going to ask them to pay a fee for the use of those facilities. So that's that ballpark fee. And that encompasses any use by a, any organization generating, any organization that's not a nonprofit, generating revenue through the use of those facilities, we're going to ask for a fee.
Okay. Is there a, is there a checklist of who that, because on here, it says non-resident games and tournaments, and that doesn't sound the same as what you just said.
Yeah, I think that non-resident might be, we, I don't have the actual minutes of that meeting, but we put it forth as any town youth organization would still be free.
Even if they were for profit?
Yeah, even if they were for profit.
No, well, no, we're talking, we're talking like Tiverton Youth Soccer, Youth Baseball, those aren't for profit. But if someone wants to come in and run a tournament, and they're going to collect fees from teams, and it's not benefiting the youth of this town or the residents of this town, if it's not organized town sports, then we're going to, we're going to ask them for a fee.
Okay. Yeah, what I think is probably the, something we need to talk about going forward is a firm policy as to who fits into that box and who doesn't, and who makes that determination, and who, you know, because I think we all know what we want to accomplish. I just want everybody to understand what the rules are, and a policy would get us there. It doesn't have to be a long policy, but if there's preference, or if there's a selection, or if there's, you know, it's, all we've got is $50 per game or $100 maximum. So I read this as, if you wanted to rent out your tournament, you rent out a field for a tournament, you only have to pay 100 bucks, and you could have it for the whole weekend, or.
I think we may have put per day.
It says, it says $100 maximum per, just that's all it says.
Yeah, and I don't think what you're seeing there is actually what we, what we proposed.
Okay.
But I will take your suggestion back to the board.
Yeah, I mean, if you just, if you take a look at what your, your resolution was, and add some additional language to create a, even if it's, you know, one page, just so that it's a start, so we know.
And I think it might be, might be easier and better for us to just include the organizations that, the type of organizations that would be exempt. That way, we won't be held to, oh, we're not one of those listed, we don't want to pay you.
Okay.
And as far as that Grinnell's Beach, we, at our last meeting, we did get some input from the public on that concern for the facility, and it got me thinking, and we are going to be discussing at our next meeting, or I, at least I will be, bringing it forward to the other members, and hopefully we'll come to you with a proposal for you to take it forward, or give us permission and give us the clearance to go ahead with some type of parking by permit only at Grinnell's Beach, so that people aren't getting there at 3:00 in the morning and staying there all day. No matter what time they get there, once we open that gate, our attendant goes through, you either leave or you pay. You can pay by the day, and go, the attendant can sell you a daily pass if you're a non-resident, put it on your dashboard, and you're okay. Or you can buy, maybe we can propose to allow the non-resident, let them buy a season pass, then they can come anytime they want. So we might not eliminate some of the foot traffic on the beach, but we certainly may be able to limit some of the people who are parking all day for free, and at the same time, generate some revenue.
Thank you. The one thing I just, that came to my mind, when we're talking about comparable beaches, I think Grinnell's Beach is, I think we should remember that it is, we have a strategic kind of geographical advantage when it comes to providing a beach service, and I say that because we don't have nearly the traffic we have at, say, at Foggland that we do on the weekends, or the same kind of traffic as we do at Grinnell's. And likewise, I mean, I've been a resident of Tiverton for 30 years, and I can only find South Shore one out of every four or five times I go down there, so I very much doubt that we would lose a lot of traffic to South Shore if we were to raise our fees at Grinnell's. And likewise, I don't think we're going to lose a lot of that traffic going across, over the bridge, or going down to Westport in the harbor. So I think, I mean, we're close to a lot of nodes of transportation, we're close to Fall River, we're close to the highway, so it's easy to get to, and I'm not sure if we even raised by $10 the weekend rate for non-residents, we're going to push a lot of people to go elsewhere, but.
Okay, that's a good point, I'll give you that. It's a very good point.
Matt, are we emptying the trash daily at the beach?
No, we're not, and the reason why that happened in years past, because you had an employee who did it every day. But what you didn't get in your pass-through and your budget conversation is how much that actually cost. So if you're going to score the cost of having the activity to the activity itself, or the facility itself, it's going to start to pile up real quick, because this year, we took that activity and we monetized it. In other words, after Mr. Martin's departure, there was a private vendor who was picking up the trash in the off-season, at great expense to the town, and it wasn't all charged to the recreation budget, because they didn't have sufficient budget to cover that cost. Then we had a retirement, and we also had a seasonal employee who was, in the year-round employee of the town, who was involved in a lawsuit with the town, who was not reporting to work at the time. So for a good part of this spring, we were running the beach facilities with no employees, whereas in the past, you had at least two, the better part of three people, and a truck and a trailer to drag the stuff around with, because, not to. Because, not to wear my frustration on my sleeve, but not everybody employed in the town thinks it's their job to pick up the trash. And so when you ask them to do it, first of all, there's limited resources for them to do it anyway, because there isn't a dedicated vehicle. But that may not necessarily be part of their job description. So that's what we're running up against. And an awful lot of activity that people don't see. So I was going to save this for Town Administrator's time, I might as well tell you now, since it's topical. We're spending a tremendous amount of time and resources just keeping the beaches at the level that they're at. So last week, I sent around some photos, I don't know if everybody saw them. Some wise guy took a bucket full of rocks and sand, dumped it into the toilet, Foggland, flushed the toilet, blocked the toilet up, excreted in the toilet, because they're making some sort of statement, I guess. So we had two town employees had to go down there, pull the toilet out of the ground, snake it out, clean it out, reinstall it with a new beeswax ring and all this stuff. It probably took the two guys about three hours. That's an expense to the town, also an opportunity cost. They weren't doing the other things they were supposed to do here at Town Hall or at the Senior Center or other facilities like Town Farm, because some jerk busted the door and busted the toilet. And there's been a pattern of this. So we've had beach furniture broken up and used in a bonfire. We had somebody at Bugamash Park drop sand and rocks down the septic stacks so that the toilets wouldn't flush. So it's a constant running battle, and we keep coming back to, and I'm thankful to the police chief for being responsive, and he has been, that we're going to have to increase our vigilance around public facilities. If they're going to endure this kind of abuse, and we're going to try to keep fees reasonable for everybody, then there's going to have to be a certain amount of enforcement activity that goes along with it. That may not have been necessary in the past, because you had one employee who spent a lot of time monitoring everything.
Is there any further comment from the public?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Introduce yourself, please.
Hit it with the connection, Chris.
Hello?
There you go.
Okay. My name is Chris Clarendon, I sit on the Foggland Beach Oversight Committee, I also sit on the Tiverton Harbor Commission. I guess Bruce tried to introduce me earlier, but it wasn't public comment period. Anyway, so I'll take my comments in those two orders, first as part of the Foggland Beach Oversight Committee. And I have the endorsement of Tom Romatowski, who's the chairman, who I discussed what I was going to say tonight with him earlier, last couple days. I'm also an oyster farmer in the Secanet River, so I'm at Foggland very often, have been for the last nearly 10 years. And I can back up what Matt's saying about what happens down there. It's astounding. It's pretty much 24/7. Sure, the chief will agree with me that all kinds of things happen down there. I've seen amazing things dumped there, whether that's part of pay-as-you-throw, or whether it's always been the case, I don't think it's always been the case, but astounding things show up on the beach down there. This year, someone put a computer monitor up in the dunes, there's been trash thrown there regularly, it's a mess, and I don't know if a dedicated employee would solve the problem or not, I don't know. But whatever the solution is, it's not going to be cheap, and I know that the beach directly across the river, Sandy Point, charges $7 for the weekday, and I believe it's $12 on the weekend. So even a minimal fee adjustment, I think, is justified in this case, because I love the opinion that Foggland is at least as nice as Sandy Point, and if it were maintained, it would probably be even better than Sandy Point as far as a destination. It's a fantastic resource for the town, and the town residents pay high taxes in order to use that, whereas out-of-state residents pay a pretty nominal fee to come there. And it is packed every weekend, not only with recreational vehicles, but all kinds of other vehicles, and in line with Council Pelletier. When I try to make a license plate count, it's overwhelmingly out-of-state, overwhelmingly out-of-state. And I feel as if I'm subsidizing as a taxpayer, and I know that most people in Tiverton feel the same way, our taxes are very high here, and I start to get a little bit resentful of people coming and using this fantastic resource at what I consider a fairly inexpensive rate. That's just my two cents worth. So I would strongly encourage the council to consider raising fees, even if by a token amount, to begin to address the issue of the abuse of Foggland. Now, I don't even go to Grinnell's because of what Council Pelletier was discussing. I can't even really set foot on that beach. It's filthy. I know that we used to have trash receptacles down at Foggland at one point, I believe, Steve, is that? And the same thing happened at Foggland. Without constant vigilance on a trash receptacle, it's going to turn into its own mini dump. So these are my concerns as a user of that beach on a regular basis. Every time I go down there, I try to take trash off, but it's overwhelming. It's just overwhelming. I have at least two green bags in the back of my truck every time I go down there, and I could easily fill them up probably within a half an hour. I just don't have the time to do that every single time I go down there. I'm trying to get work done, usually. And it's a shame, too, because it's, I'm there year-round, it's a completely different scene in the winter, especially this winter. You know, nobody's there, but the trash doesn't go anywhere. The trash stays there. And what you have on that beach is not necessarily inert, especially if you're looking at a computer monitor sitting there. I know if you guys are familiar with what's in a computer monitor, but there's all kinds of terrible things that are leaching out into your beach and your water. I'm currently doing water testing with Chip Lawrence, who's also on the Harbor Commission, to see what's going on with the water down there. So I have grave concerns about Foggland, and I just think that it's a resource that the town tends to overlook. So, okay, the, I don't know if you guys want to have any questions for me about Foggland?
No, just echo every single sentence.
As far as the Harbor Commission goes, I'm here as a private citizen, even though I sit on the Harbor Commission. This is to do with mooring fees. There are several different categories, as previously pointed out, resident, non-resident, commercial. I'm a commercial payer. It's exorbitant, it's $325 if I pay on time, but someone from Massachusetts can come and put a mooring in here and pay the exact same fee as I do. Again, I feel as a tax-paying resident that that's inherently unfair. And so my thought is that there should be yet another category of commercial fee, because I don't think it's fair that I, as a resident, commercial payer, and a resident of Tiverton have to pay the same as a non-resident, because I'm already being taxed. So I feel it's sort of a double hit. So as a resident, I'm making a recommendation that there be another category for commercial non-resident, which has never existed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment? Any further comment? I'd like to close the public hearing. Council, what's your pleasure with this?
You're talking about the beaches still?
Well, let's talk about the fine and fees table, we'll send back to Matt, with detail about what we can change and can't change, what stay required, and some of Brett's questions, which I know he submitted.
So we're going to continue the broader discussion on the fee schedule until we can get as much contextual and historical information as possible to inform the discussion.
Can we put it in a meeting in July, Nancy?
I don't know where Andy went, but can we?
Probably should put it in sections as well.
Yeah, I was going to say, can we?
And perhaps Matt can come up with whichever sections he wants to, he's prepared to do on each meeting, and you'll have to keep continuing the public hearing.
What I'm wondering is, can we vote on a couple tonight, especially like the Cemetery Commission? We want to get them rolling so that they can start charging their updated fee and things like that. And I think we can probably, I don't know what the pleasure of the council is, but I'm happy to talk, to vote on the beach fees so that we can get a start. I mean, the beaches just, they opened within the last two weeks full-time?
Yeah.
So I don't think we're too far. The horse hasn't left the barn just yet. And there's no real request for changes on the DPW schedule, so, and I think that's it, right? Oh, and planning and, but maybe we, that may be a longer conversation.
I'd like to entertain a motion.
So where, what happened to Andrew?
Mr. Tights?
He's not going to hear us. Huh? All right, Ben. So just one question, if we're going to go to talk about Cemetery, I just have, is anybody here from the Cemetery Commission?
Yes, there are.
Excellent.
Oh, excellent. I just, when I read your memo, you're requesting that we go from 400 to 500, and you provided a lot of backup from other communities, and I guess the question I have is, is 500 enough?
Could someone come to the microphone, please?
Leonie, did you give them the worksheet I?
Yes, I did.
You have the other worksheet I had?
I've got a bunch of stuff, yes. So, you know, that led me to think like there's a spreadsheet here where you compare what Pecassid is to others. And I mean, we go through Fall River, Notre Dame is $930, Oak Grove's $1,300, St. John's, St. Pass, and St. Mary's, $930 for a single, and we're at 400, you're recommending we go to 500. But I'm wondering, is 500 enough? Should we be going a little bit more so that we can try to maintain? I mean, I know we had a deficit last year in maintenance.
Well, in actuality, I don't think we know what the good price is going to be to help us out here, but we figured another $100 is kind of reasonable for the Tiverton residents.
Yeah.
But I also put another sheet in, I called it a worksheet, did you get that?
Is it this one?
No.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
It's all right.
And that kind of gives you an idea, Brett, that we have 2,200 plots left, and that kind of shows you that, you know, depending on how Ann does on her sales, and that varies, you know, one minute we sell, one year we sell 30, next year we sell 40, and if she sells 50, we're going to have no deficit at all for this year.
We don't want to encourage that too much.
I'm sorry?
So we don't want to encourage that too much.
No, no, you're true, it's true. But...
Okay.
As you can see, if we have about $6,000 through the entrance and maintenance fees that we collect normally every year, and we're running about 22, we're running about 20, what do I get here? We got 20, 26,000. So we need another 20,000 in sales to balance off the books. And if we do it at $400 a plot, we need to sell 50 plots. If we sell any less, we're going to go into some kind of a deficit. And what's the story here is that, what do I get here? On a good year, selling 40 plots is 16,000, but we still will be short 4,000. And, you know, right now, we've got a present working balance of $123,000, and if we unfortunately had to take 4,000 every year, that gives us a 30-year lifetime of what we have now. So that's all I can say, Brett.
Sure. I think when we talked about this, when you came for your annual report, it's a pretty simple equation. We have the ability to raise the plot price, and we have some, you know, interest that is generated from the, I call it an endowment, but it's not really an endowment, it's the capital, perpetual fund, which can't, the capital of which can't be touched. So, and this is one of those steps, and I think there's another conversation we have to have about what do we do to kick that fund a little bit harder so that we can generate some more revenue.
Right, and that all depends on the interest rate, too. If the interest rate goes up, we're going to be golden, but right now, it's really, really low, so we're in trouble.
We'll try and poke and prod it a little harder.
There you go.
So, you know, so I'm sensitive to, and, you know, the worksheet is page three, for lack of a better description, that compares our fees to other, I mean, if you look, we're currently, a four-grave lot with perpetual care at Pecassid Hill is $1,600, and if you look at any of the Fall River neighboring, it's $4,500. It's three times as expensive. So, you know, I don't know if this is a good first step, and we want to take a swing at it again next year, or if we want to actually talk about maybe bumping that up a little bit more. I don't know, I'm not an expert in this, but it would appear as though our neighboring communities...
Well, I guess what you have to keep in mind, too, this is for Tiverton residents. So like that one gentleman said, the taxes are kind of high. We're trying to keep it reasonable, and I think this is one way to do it. I mean, if you want to keep raising and raising, then I don't think that's fair for the Tiverton resident, myself. And that's our commission. We have five members. It was unanimous that we voted to keep it at 500.
All right. Good enough for me, then.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. So I would move that we, help me, Andy, with the language here. I want to approve the increase for the Cemetery Commission's plot price.
My understanding was, if you wanted to approve different sections?
Yes.
Then I would just, you know, have a motion to approve the fees for Cemetery, for fire inspection, building inspection, the ones that you want to, I mean, if you want to do them all separately, or you want to lump them together, the ones you want to approve?
I think there's some we want to lump, some we want to.
Okay.
But at least I would make, I move that we approve the recommended fee schedule for the Pecassid Hill Cemetery Commission, for the Pecassid Hill Cemetery as submitted. I think it's, nothing has changed except the 500, 400 goes from 400 for a single to 500.
For a single plot?
Correct.
You were also, on your handwritten thing, there was something about increases on the fees charged for opening and closing graves?
No, no.
That has to go through the contract, that...
But that's a fee you charge people?
No. No, that's under contract.
Well, does it get billed, well, does it go through you, or does it get billed?
No, it goes through the, that's under contract, it goes through the maintenance man.
Okay, but does the maintenance man send this, does the superintendent send a bill to the party, and if they don't pay, he has to chase them?
Yes.
Or is it you?
No, no. He takes care of that.
Okay, so you just authorize?
That's his responsibility.
You authorize that amount, but he bills it separately?
Right.
Okay, fine.
So here's a question. You are changing the cost of a single lot from four to five, but there's also on this schedule a multi-grave lot, four graves for 16, you're not changing that?
Yes, we are. Every grave is going to be $500, no matter if you buy four, or one or two.
Okay. So you got to make that adjustment as well.
That's page 10, bottom of page 10. So Brett, do you have a motion on the?
I do, yeah.
I will second that.
Motion's been made in secret, all those in favor?
All right.
Now, do we have to publish that, that we are raising those?
To post?
Does that have to be published in the paper, that we are raising those lots, and that they have a certain amount of time?
It can be as a courtesy, it does not have to be.
Oh, I see.
I mean, the point is, that's why you're having the public hearing now.
Oh, okay.
If anybody wanted to protest or complain about it, this was their opportunity to them.
Okay, fine. Thank you very much. Okay, fine, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll move that we adopt the fee schedule for the Department of Public Works.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, all those in favor? Any other motion?
There's no changes on that.
I will make a motion that we increase the non-resident beach fees for Grinnell's and Foggland from $5 for a weekday fee for non-residents to $10, and for the weekend and holiday rate for non-residents, change it from 10 to $20.
Do I have a second?
Second. Are we gonna do every line item that, so we'll go down? Because we have campers, season passes.
Yeah, why don't we take it line by line?
It's fine, it's fine.
I have a motion second, all those in favor?
Yeah.
Well, I said discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe something for the beaches, you hear a lot of the complaints seem to be about the trash, maybe not so much about money collecting, but a lot about the trash. Maybe something we could do, I'm not sure if this is possible, say we raise the beach fees, as you propose, maybe add $2 to them, and the $2 would be covered for a Tiverton trash bag. If those people return the trash bag with their trash, they can get a little discount the next time they come back to the beach.
Where'd they go?
I'm not sure what the logistics could be for that, but you could possibly have one person accepting the trash bags at some location, they give that person a ticket, they return it to the booth on the way out, and they get like a little $5 off next time they come back to the beach, but they still have to pay $2 for the bag. That might help incentivize, pick up your own trash. Sum them all over.
I think, and I'll just, this is tangential, but I think that, and I have absolutely no data to back this up, but my instinct and what I have observed is that we don't necessarily have a trash problem when we have the gate attendant, the monitor, and the lifeguard.
That's what I don't know. I don't know when is occurring.
And so, it's when, I think the problem is, and whoever has an opinion on this can tell me if I'm right or wrong, the problem really is, after those people go home, and after there's no longer a presence of the monitor or the gate attendant walking around and saying, hey, that's trash, throw it away, and so that's what complicates the issue even more. I don't think it's necessarily that people are during the day or the weekend when people are there are abusing, but, you know, when I was there, it was right after the gate closed, I guess six o'clock, or, I mean, not the gate, the gatehouse or whatever.
I was just gonna say, another solution which would not be popular, but would be to lock the gate after sunset, or at some point.
Yeah, and I think these are all valid, valid points, and I think we should be talking about, I mean, there's a fee schedule portion of the policy, and then there's kinda like an operational sort of component that needs to be discussed, and, you know, Mr. Cudero brought up a really great point, and we're not gonna solve this here tonight, but frankly, perhaps we need to talk about reallocating some of that revenue dollars into some sort of dedicated, maybe it doesn't go into the general fund, or maybe a portion of it goes into the general fund, and, you know, but we're not gonna solve that, to better kinda self-sustain operations at the facilities.
But I think, to support your motion, I think that raising these fees on non-residents will, at the very least, I think it does a couple of things. It may reduce traffic, which I think we're okay with, if it's out-of-town traffic that is really the cost driver of providing the service, and I think it'll put additional revenues in the town's general fund to, or the revenue budget to, going forward, start to plan about how maybe we allocate dollars differently in the future.
And, you know, I think the point about potentially losing traffic is valid and worth noting, and I certainly don't want to dismiss it. My sense, and I don't know if you have a good grasp on this yet, but I don't know what that data looks like for, and I think we need to instant, if we're gonna have a conversation like this and talk about impacts, we better have the data to back it up to understand, well, gee whiz, there was a 50% drop-off, or a 20% drop-off, or, you know what? It remained flat, and we saw more revenue come in, but in the absence of some true and consistent way of tracking fees collected at both of our beaches, we're flying blind on this, and we'll continue to.
We would have to lose...
This is, and I'll make this very brief, I will vote for your, for your motion, but I don't think increasing the non-resident fees by amounts like that really respond to the issues that have been raised tonight. I really think that we're gonna have to address this issue next year, when we really have a destination point. If you raise the fees to the point where somebody, someone says, well, I'm not gonna, I'm not going to Grinnell Beach anymore, so what? They're simply gonna go to one of the other local beaches. This isn't a, Grinnell's is not a destination point for anybody, as far as I'm concerned, but you know in a year from now, it will be, and I think at that point, you're gonna be in a position to charge people for the real cost of those services, because you're gonna have a brand-new beach, I expect you're gonna have more parking, that's important, and you're gonna have a pier. All of that is gonna generate a lot more income.
Do we have a separate fee schedule, Foggland versus Grinnell's?
Well, I think that can be discussed.
Yeah.
I have a lot of people waiting for appointments.
I was gonna say, the perfect, one example I keep thinking of is, people tell me, you know what, when they get the restaurant open, they're gonna be bringing boats up to the pier. I don't know if that's true.
Not.
But if that's true, just assume that, what do you charge somebody for tying a boat up at a pier to go to a restaurant for dinner? I'm not so sure it's $5, and I'm not even sure it's $10. I think it's a lot more than that. I don't know if that hypothetical is true or not, but I keep hearing that story.
I have a motion on the floor, and seconded, all those in favor?
Yeah, we got a few more of these.
All right, we'll move quickly through this. I make a motion that we increase the weekday fee for residents, for campers and RVs, from 15 to 25, and for weekends and holidays.
Is this resident or non-resident?
I'm sorry, this is...
Non.
Yeah, there, it's a flat fee, whether you're a resident or a non-resident, so let me rephrase that, my apologies. I make a motion that we increase the weekday camper RV fee from 15 to $25, and the weekend holiday camper RV fee from 25 to $35.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, any discussion?
I'm sorry, are you planning on putting these increases into effect at all for this year, for July fir, is there a date that we're talking effective, July 1st, or?
That was my assumption, July 1st.
Okay, all right, I just wanna make sure that we're all on the same page. Great.
All those in favor?
And I would make a motion that we increase the non-resident season pass fee from 100 to 125 dollars.
It's actually 75 now.
Oh, it is?
Yep.
It says?
I remove, I...
Correct me if I'm wrong, 75 now?
Why does it say 100?
Because they're recommending.
Because they're recommending increasing. Then I would make a motion that we accept the non-resident season pass fee at $100.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Bless you.
Anything further?
I'm sorry to keep belaboring this, but currently, we have no ballfield fees in place. I don't know if they intended to charge fees, but we, they can't until we've approved this new fee, so, is this something that needs further discussion, or?
Yes, it does, because I think you have to be very careful, the distinctions you draw between resident, non-resident, and profit versus nonprofit. Just because people pay to play doesn't mean they're making a profit, they may actually be raising money under a 501(c)(3), so, it's not, it's a distinction without a real difference. But resident versus non-resident is operative.
Yeah, and I think a policy would go a long way, and, because is it one person's a resident, and everybody else is from Florida, or, you know, how do we determine what a resident team is?
Okay. I just wanna make a note that all the other fees that you haven't gotten to yet, if they're no change, they remain the same.
Correct.
I just want people to understand, the fees didn't all disappear for the other departments if they weren't enacted, they just remain the same and aren't being changed.
Thank you.
But we should have a specific motion to continue all the rest of the fee, the departments and commissions and boards that you haven't gotten to, to whatever particular date you wanna...
I move that we continue the public hearing on proposed changes to Code of Ordinance in Section 2-1 Fees and Fines Resolution for the unaddressed fees and fines.
July 14th, it would be a suggestion, because we're gonna have a busy meeting.
To July 14th. It will give ample time for gathering of data.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Appointments and resignations, there, these, there are a lot. I'm gonna start with Group A. I'll ask the candidates to come up and very briefly tell us about yourself, and why you're seeking reappointment or appointment. It's my suggestion to the council, and of course, you can disagree with me, that we do make the appointments on the commissions where it's, where it's only reappointments, on the commissions where there's new appointments, I suggest that we make the appointments at our next meeting. Is that okay with everyone?
Yep.
So, for example, we have one category that has two, we could probably just, next week, make that decision, probably, right?
Exactly. Okay, we'll start with the Cemetery Commission, Shirley Moller. Is Shirley here?
Yep.
Oh, there she is.
Holy, yeah.
I know. Shirley, just very briefly, tell us about yourself and why you're seeking reappointment.
Shirley Moller, 62 Beach Avenue. I wanna be reappointed because we are right in the midst of opening up a cremation area, and I'd like to see it through.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ann Turcot.
Ann.
Ann.
I was just, I'm sorry.
Come on down.
Stand up this late.
Ann, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're seeking reappointment.
Why do I want to seek an appointment? Well, I've been on Cemetery Commission for 15 years.
Just drag the microphone, just drag the microphone to your face.
Okay, there you go. I've been on for 15 years. Last 10 years, I've been in charge of selling the cemetery lots, which is a very rewarding thing, and we deal with a lot of people that are really, you know, sympathetic, and they are heartbroken, and you have to tell them that just not buying a cemetery lot, that they are, we are feeling their pain also, you know. It's a very difficult job, but it's a very rewarding job. I've lived in, I've been born in Tiverton, I've lived in Tiverton all my life, and that's what I'm giving back to the town.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ann, and thank you for your service.
You're welcome, thank you.
I'd like to entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion that we reappoint Shirley Moller and Ann Turcot to three-year terms on the Cemetery Commission through April 15th, 2017.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Conservation Commission, three vacancies for a three-year term to April 15th, 2017. Peter Mello?
Hi.
Hi, Peter.
1912 Grand Road, I've been on the Conservation Committee for the last two years, and I've been working with the Staffordton, and I think that's a very important issue that I would like to finish and follow through with.
Thank you. Dr. Thomas Ramitowsky? Is it, Tom's, I don't see Tom.
I'll make a motion that we approve the reappointment of Peter Mello and Dr. Thomas Ramitowsky to three-year terms on the Conservation Commission through April 15th, 2017.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, all those in favor? Historical Cemetery Commission, two vacancies, three-year terms, three-year term to April 15th, 2017. Robert Martin, I don't think about you.
No, I don't see him.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Robert C. Martin to the Historical Cemetery's Commission for a three-year term ending April 15th, 2017.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Open Space and Land Preservation Committee, three vacancies, three-year term to 4/15/2017. Dennis Culberson? Is Dennis here? Gail Lawrence?
Adam President, Gail Lawrence was here, but she had to...
Was she, but we lost her.
I would move that we reappoint Dennis Culberson and Gail Lawrence, both for three-year terms ending 4/15/2017.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Recycling Landfill Committee, three vacancies, three-year terms, 4/15/2017. Richard Guimont? I think we lost some people as we've been...
No, no, no.
Oh, there he is. Welcome, Mr. Guimont. Just briefly?
Yeah, I've been on conservation now for a couple of years, and I work with conservation and the landfill.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Steven Reis?
Reese.
Reese.
I move that we reappoint both Richard Guimont and Steven Reese to, both to three-year terms on the Recycling and Landfill Committee to expire 4/15/17.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Stone Bridge, two vacancies, one public member, one business owner, three-year terms to 4/15/2017. Linda Jenkins, public member.
I've been on the committee since 2004, then it became an official committee for the town in 2006. I've been on since then, and my kids every year toast at New Year's that hopefully I won't die before the Stone Bridge gets done, and it's looking real close, so I'd like to continue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chi Lariano? She was here.
I'll make a motion that we reappoint Linda M. Jenkins as the public mender, member, rather, and Chi Lariano as the business owner representative, to three-year terms on the Stone Bridge Commission through 4/15/2017.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, all those in favor? Appointments, Group B, Economic Development Commission, one vacancy for your term to July 15th, 2018. This is a new request for appointment. Melissa Hutchinson. Hi.
My name's Melissa Hutchinson. I'm a Tiverton resident, have lived here for 10 years. I'm a registered architect in the state of Rhode Island, have been for 12 years. I'm also a professor at Roger Williams University, and I own my own practice here in Tiverton. And I'm interested in just becoming involved and helping out, and very much so in the economic development field.
Thank you, Melissa.
We have a letter of endorsement or recommendation from Scott Humphrey, the chairman of the Tiverton EDC, for her appointment.
So, we do this appointment next week?
I don't know why, but we do that.
Harbor and Coastal Water Management Commission, five vacancies, two two-year terms to July 15th, 2016, and three one-year terms to July... 15th, 2016, and three one-year terms to July 15th, 2015, to stagger appointments. Bruce Cox.
Good evening. As I said in my application, there's nothing quite so worth doing as messing around with boats. I love it, it's not only my, it's not my vocation, it is my avocation. And the other members of my commission, Chris is not here, he had to, he gets up way too early in the morning, they're, they're enjoying it as well, we're accomplishing a lot of good things.
Thank you. Melinda Foley Marcello? Is she here?
No.
Charles Lawrence?
I didn't see you.
And David Stewart?
I just have a quick question. So, are the first two people listed here, the two-year term?
That was my question.
And the last two, one-year terms?
Melinda Foley joined us only about a year and a half ago, so she sort of has had a partial term. I think they're still staggered terms and not one-year terms. I'm not sure why so many of them came up. I was surprised to see that. I think there should be staggered terms.
And two of them will have-
Are we-
Three one-year terms, so two would have to have a one-year term.
I just think, I mean, do you know if you're going to get the two-year or the one-year term?
I have no idea.
Okay, so it's, oh, I guess that's what I was trying to get at. I didn't know.
Is this-
You should probably walk out of here knowing whether or not you have a two-year or a one-year commitment.
Makes no never mind to me. If it's a one-year term, I'll be probably back here again next year saying, "Give me more punishment." I'm glutton for it.
Are there staggered terms in the, in the establishing ordinance or charter, whatever?
Here we-
All right, so at one point, it will correct itself, and we will have steady terms, but stag-
From the fact that when you, when you was, council agreed to the policy, it pushes them into different group categories with different needs, so you couldn't extend them, you had to go back. So, a lot of this is just, and I do believe with some of these appointments, we're getting to the end of this interim times of trying to reach these staggered appointments again. There's one or two that we still are going to have a problem with.
So, when we get to these folks, again, it'll be two-year terms for everybody?
No.
It will.
Because it's not staggered, it's not staggered terms as much as it is a date at which, yeah.
So, I guess we could do the first two, would be the two-year.
Madam President, I move that we reappoint Bruce Cox and Melinda Foley Marcello to two-year terms to expire July 15th, 2016.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor?
And that we appoint Charles Z. Lawrence and David Stewart to one-year terms, expire on July 15th, 2015.
Second.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Planning Board, two vacancies, three-year terms to 7/15/2017. There are four applicants. No Burge, new request for appointment. Welcome.
Good evening. My name's Noel Burge, 281 Indian Point Road. My reason for seeking appointment to the Planning Board is monetary. I'd like to see my real estate tax reduced. And I think my background, which I'll get into later, would be an asset in helping the Planning Board secure meaningful economic growth that would provide the revenues that would not only meet dividends' increasing needs each year, but offset the real estate tax. Now, in my application and attached resume, got over 40 years as a working engineer, and I've served on various dividend boards, commissions, including Planning Board, for some 18 years. And I think those will combine to be that asset, if you will, that would help the Planning Board achieve that really necessary economic growth.
Thank you, Noel.
Thank you, Mr. Burge.
Edward Campbell?
How are you, Mia? My name's Ed Campbell. I've been a Tiburon resident since the fall of 2007. I'm a retired federal criminal investigator and a Vietnam veteran. I'm currently involved with the Samaritans of Rhode Island. I'm a deputy boxing commissioner of One Each in Massachusetts in Foxwoods. I'm an Olympic boxing official, and I'm a volunteer boxing coach at the Fall River P.A. As you can see, I like boxing. But I, I'd also be interested in getting involved in the town government here. I haven't had a job like this before, but I'm pretty good at putting things together, and I'm analytical in that. If I didn't say so, I spent my entire working career down in D.C., Maryland, and Virginia, with the exception of a year in Vietnam. So, I'm ready to go up your interest in me.
Thank you.
I think you might find that the boxing and the planning-
Might have.
I said, I think you might find that the boxing background may be an asset to the planning.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you. Susan Gill? New request for appointment?
Hi, Susan Gill, 1392 Main Road. I'm here before you, asking for appointment to the Planning Board. I've been in the economic development for a year and a half. I recently joined the Recreation Commission, and as I've gone through the process, I keep finding more meetings, commissions that I'm interested in, and it's giving me a much broader picture of what Tiburon's all about, and I think that's something that I can bring to the Planning Board. I attend the Historical Advisory Board, the Four Corners Merchants Groups, the Recreation Commission, the Harbor and Coastal Waters Commission. I've started attending Discover Newport to work with the tourism industry, and I find it all, the volunteerism, very rewarding and interesting. I'm not afraid to ask questions. I like to solve problems and find answers. Thanks.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
Peter Monis, seeking reappointment. Is Peter here? Okay, we'll move on. Zoning Board of Review, one vacancy, five-year term to 7/15/2019. Lisa, and I'm going to, Geshstet, Gishstet?
Shite.
Is she here? Yeah, God bless you. I'd like to entertain a motion?
I move that we reappoint for a five-year term to end 7/15/2019, Lisa Geshet.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Zoning Board of Review, alternate, one vacancy, one-year term to July 15th, 2015, Wendy Taylor Humphrey. Is Wendy here? This is a reappointment.
I move that we reappoint Wendy Taylor Humphrey as the alternate on the Zoning Board of Review for the one-year term expiring the 15th of July of 2015.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Appointments Group, says a vacancy. Housing Authority, one vacancy, five-year term to 10/15/2019. One vacancy, unexpired term to 10/15/2018. Bobby J. Harris, seeking reappointment.
Excuse me, Madam President, there has been, someone noticed us that they want to withdraw, and that would be Agnes Johnson.
They want to what?
To withdraw. Hello, Mr. Harris.
I'm Bobby J. Harris, Bobby Jill Harris, okay? Anyway, I'm a retired Navy guy for 20 years. I retired from Brown University for 31 years, and I've been in the housing for over eight years. I'm determined ahead, I'm currently the chairman there, and we've been through a lot of renovations, we've been through a lot of problems, because the building is 28 years old, and we've just had the new fiber remoilers, replaced them with three. Hot water tank, we've just replaced. So, we've, getting up to par now, so I would like to continue on if possible.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Been back here for 48 years.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Christopher Neypath? New request for appointment?
Good evening. I've been a resident of Tiburon since 1988, currently on the Wastewater Management Commission, have been for several years. I'm looking to fill my late wife's position on the Housing Authority. I've been to numerous Housing Authority meetings, I'm familiar with the staff and the Housing Authority, have a good working relationship with them, and with the residents at the Housing Authority, I'm aware of the issues there, and I'm there every day seeing my mother-in-law, so I want to look out for the welfare of the residents there.
Thank you. Juvenile Hearing Board, two vacancies, three-year term to 10/15/2017. Renee Brown, and I don't believe she's here. No.
I move that we reappoint Renee Brown to the Juvenile Hearing Board for a three-year term, expiring 10/15/17. Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Historic Preservation Advisory Board, three vacancies, three-year term to 10/15/17. Stuart Hardy, seeking reappointment. He was here, but I think he-
I'd happily move that we reappoint Stu Hardy for the Historic Preservation Advisory Board for a three-year term, ending 10/15/17.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Tax Assessment Board of Review, one vacancy, three-year term to 10/15/17, Kathleen Skrupiak.
Skriptiak.
Skrupiak, when I went to school.
Yeah.
I would happily move that we reappoint Kathleen-
One more time?
Skrupiak.
Skrupiak, for a three-year term, ending 10/15/17.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Okay, we got through that.
I'll just remind people quickly that we have one vacancy remaining on the Conservation Commission, one vacancy remaining on the Historical Cemeteries Commission, one vacancy remaining on Open Space and Land Preservation Commission, three, one vacancy on the Recycling and Landfill Commission, one vacancy on Harbor and Coastal Waters Management, and two vacancies on the Historic Preservation Advisory Board, and one vacancy on the Juvenile Hearing Board.
Thank you. Unfinished Business, Pauline Richard, request for streetlights installed on LaDue Lane from Winterberry to Teaberry. Recommendation from DPW Director, continued from June 9th.
Good evening again. This is a follow-up for your last meeting. You asked to get some information. I finally got it from National Grid. It involves the cost of installing a new light. There'd be no cost for installation, they would supply the head and install it free. The costs come in the annual charges per year. A 100-watt light bulb would be $139 per year to operate, and a 250-watt light would be $236 per year. I still support, even though I know Chief Blakey has been charged with shutting down a lot of lights in town, this particular light, I think, was missed in the design of Winterberry Woods when they combined both of the Due Lane subdivision and the Winterberry Woods subdivision. I think it's an investment in safety that the town should make, and I support it. I really think we only need the 100-watt light. It's not a heavily populated or heavily traveled way intersection, and I think that would suffice, and there's a couple of neighbors that are living right at the intersection, and it wouldn't impair, hopefully, their, their sleep at night, so.
Is Mrs. Richard here? I'd like to entertain a motion.
I'll move that we move forward with the installation of a 100-watt light, traffic light, not a traffic light, street light, rather, on LaDue Lane.
Second.
I have a motion-
At the intersection of Teaberry Drive.
At the intersection of Teaberry Drive.
Second.
I have a motion in second. All those in favor?
And Nancy, you're going to contact Mrs. Richard, who gave us her phone number the last meeting.
Yeah, we have the phone number right here.
Financial Business, Chief Lloyd, request transfer of $32,600 from account number 33105101, base salary to account number 33105104, overtime.
Yes, again, just trying to finish a year on, on the black. I just need to move money from one account to the other, so we're finishing in the black.
These are for funds already expended, I presume, or incurred?
These are for funds already incurred?
No, these, these are to get us through to the end of the year, get us to July 1st. This is the anticipation of what's-
One week's worth of overtime?
No. There's going to, there's two and a half weeks of overtime there. Because, so we have, half the employees are paid in the rears, and then going, what we have going forward, anticipating where we are.
Okay.
Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion.
And this is, this is going to cover us for the remainder of the year?
We anticipate.
Yep. This will cover you till July 1st? It should.
Aren't barring any unforeseen things that we're not aware of right now.
Mr. Wojcik, are you comfortable with this request?
I would add the phrase, that we may or may not be aware of in the last week. So, I mean, we're, we're closing the books, and I think the chief's got a good, reasonable estimate of what's going to cost him to close this books.
So, I, I mean, I will approve this and just have the record note that, again, I understand that, to some extent, the collective bargaining agreement has our hands tied a little bit, but I just, you know, I said it the last time, and I'll say it again, that, you know?
And we've had an additional resignation since the last time we talked about this. We got another letter this week. So, it's the operation of a contract together with what's actually happening with staffing.
Yeah. No, I just want to note that, you know, we're, yeah, you know, I'll, I'll support this, but, I mean, we're just, we got to get at some of the root causes here, and I know folks are working hard on that, you know, so that we can try to gain some ground in, in the new fiscal year on this front, so.
Well, I'll make the motion, then, to transfer, authorize the transfer of $32,600 from account 33105101, base salary, to account 33105104, overtime, in the fire department budget, to cover overtime until the end of the fiscal year.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Thank you. Chief Blakey, request transfer of $9,147 to account 3306930, Communication, from accounts 3305107, Holiday, for $4,849.20. 3305106, auto rank pay, for $2,210.60. Account 3306912, Electric, for $1,014.56. Account, account 3307611, Gasoline, for $1,026.11.
Madam President, yes, that's just to buy some necessary equipment. Two of our radios are worn out, the base units in the cars, and we want to replace two portable radios. These were accounts that were just, from our, this year's budget, we're collectively putting them in the communication account.
So, each of the units is about 20, is 2,600 and 2,400, give or take? I imagine one's the portable, one's the base unit?
The base units are around 2,600.
So, the portable's 24.
Madam President, let the record show that the vital piece of information is on page three.
three. Prices quoted are from the state of Rhode Island, Master Pricing Agreement Number 395. So this does not go out to bid, these prices are firm, correct?
Correct, these are from the state bid list. Thank you.
I'd entertain a motion.
Move that we approve the transfer request.
Yep.
As indicated, from the four accounts noted, Holiday, Out-of-Rank, Electric, and Gasoline, to Communications, in the amount of $9,147.
Second.
Have a motion in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. New Business Board of Canvases requesting public hearing on July 14, facility to section 1205 of the town charter for November ballot question regarding amending the charter to change the date of the town financial meeting referendum, excuse me, from the 3rd Tuesday in May to the 3rd Saturday in May.
Most of you know me from the elections, Board of Canvases. So, we're requesting to have a public hearing referendum on the 15th, 14th of July, and to get going for the November elections. I think it's a charter change on the date of the election. What am I trying to say? Financial Town Referendum. So instead of having it on the way we have it now, to have it at the high school, that we have all the polls there, we don't have to go all over town, and we will save money by doing this. And everybody, we've always met there before, but so, we've got the parking, we've got the handicap, we've got everything there, so we can handle it.
And in theory, potentially draw more people because it's on a Saturday?
Yes.
We're hoping that the schools are closed on the Tuesdays, so there's no way for us to get it into one building. The only place we could go to, I mean, a feasible place to go to would be the high school. The Board of Canvas has discussed this for months now, and they have had the Jeff Karen and Nancy Driggs, who are on the original committee that advised to go to the FTR. So the only change that they're looking for is just to change the date. By charter, it's up to the Board of Canvas as to how they're going to handle the absentee voting and what poll location. So we are not asking to change this just to go to the high school. The Board of Canvas will determine where the polling location is. But by, you know, it's just to say we're going to put it on a Saturday so that we have the opportunity to go to one facility, as opposed, right now, we're setting up three facilities. This would be cutting down on poll workers. It was pretty well vetted through the Budget Committee and through the council during budget time. Also, there's a little attached memo from Dave Robert, we have, he has addressed the Board of Canvas as well. He prefers it to go on the 3rd Tuesday. I spoke with, we spoke with Mr. Perry, the Chair of the Budget Committee, as well as discussing this several times at the Budget Committee through the process. He doesn't have a problem, we've worked out the dates. There doesn't seem to be a problem with that. Now, according to the charter, it has to be presented, the council has to approve anything to go on the ballot in November. This would be a local question on the ballot, and we will have Mr. Tights make sure the legality of the phrasing of it is set before we do the public hearing.
Mrs. Miller, I just have one question. And it's because I've gotten a couple of phone calls on this. Is it my understanding that this change would now change the date, which would then allow you to use the high school, so you have an additional facility, but this doesn't prevent the Board of Canvases, I'm assuming, to still use, say, the VFW hall or other locations? And the reason I'm saying that is, now that I've heard the concern, I hope we're not going to the point where we're going to have one voting location at the high school. That might be pretty inconvenient for a lot of the older residents who live in North Tiverton. So I'm assuming, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the Board of Canvases could use the new high school, the high school, that's fine, I understand why you're using that, but that doesn't mean that you couldn't also use the VFW.
It would be unlikely, Mr. Lambert, because quite frankly, the VFW on a Saturday would be a difficult location to get. However, I have to tell you, for the communities that do this, it's often done even in their town hall. The reason we cannot just say we use the town hall for it and just have everybody come here and vote for it is because we cannot accommodate the parking and the number of voters that we could get on a contested year. However, to be opening polls all over, and to be putting poll workers there, and it just doesn't even make sense for us.
I'm not saying everywhere now, but as an alternative, could the Board of Canvases consider making available a bus? I mean, I would hate to think that we have some elderly people in some parts of the town, especially North Tiverton, who simply aren't driving anymore, and would probably, might hesitate to ask a neighbor or a friend or a relative to come and...
I think we've always accommodated anybody who's ever, usually the potties accommodate them, the potty chairs.
You're still planning to do the early voting, are you not?
We'd still be doing the absentee voting for the three days prior at the town hall.
I just want to feel comfortable that everybody's got an opportunity, a reasonable opportunity.
We're not trying to differentize anyone from voting.
Okay. No, no, but I mean, it could be done by accident, too, you know?
No, it in fact makes it more equal to any of the elderly that might live in South Tiverton or East Tiverton. I mean, yeah, we actually have people, and a clear thing of it is this last Financial Town Referendum with the results that came from the Country View that we used, now, that's kind of a captive 300 and some people right there. We took the entire section, the east area went up, all the high school area, all had to go to Country View. There's no way we're opening more than three. So they had to go up there. That turnout was very low compared for the number of people that could go there. So we're doing the best we can to accommodate everybody, and I've never heard anyone call the town hall and say, "I can't get to a polling location that we haven't accommodated." Never.
No, I'm sure you're going to do that, I just want to make sure that it's clear that the Board of Canvases will have the discretion to make the moves that are necessary, to make sure everybody's got a good opportunity to vote, that's all.
Sure.
I mean, I know we're not trying to go backwards, but aside from a couple of years, you would have had to have driven to the high school to get to the Financial Town Meeting anyway.
That's where the Financial Town Meeting was held.
You know, so, you know.
We had 200 people show up.
No, sometimes we had 1,000, sometimes we had 800. We've had very good numbers there, too.
There was other reasons for that, other than just going to the ballot.
But however this FTR is promoted is what's going to generate the people to want to go. In the same way those FDMs that had high, you know, participants there, the same thing will happen. They'll want to go, and they'll go to the high school. And I'm sure, short of setting up bus routes, which we're not doing, but in the past, we have had times where someone would call, need the ride, usually the potty chairs and stuff arrange for that, and I don't think that's a problem. I think anybody who calls here and says, "I can't get a ride," would be accommodated somehow.
Then they'd have the early voting.
Within reason, I'm not, if the entire North Tiverton end calls, I'm not renting buses.
Well, I would move that we approve the setting of a public hearing for July 14 for the question of whether or not to change the date of the Financial Town Referendum to the 3rd Saturday in May.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Pelletier, resolution in support of Rhode Island Historic Tax Credit Program and Support for Coalition for Neighborhood and Economic Renewal, CNER.
Yeah. I am sensitive of the time, but I'm also sensitive to the fact of the budget cycle at the state, so I'm not going to push this. I will talk fast and articulate as best I can. I am proposing that the town of Tiverton send a, no, I can't find it, a resolute, here, it is a resolution in support of Rhode Island committing additional, additionally committing to the Historic Tax Credit Program, and also signing on for the Coalition for Neighborhood and Economic Renewal, which is their main, one of their main focuses is supporting Historic Tax Credit. I understand that it is not currently part of the bill, I mean, part of the budget, the state budget, but I guess that's part of what this resolution is aimed to impact awareness and put the state on notice that we believe it is an important component to the development of Tiverton, I mean, of Rhode Island's infrastructure and economic base. I'm happy to answer any questions about the Historic Tax Credit Program and how it's worked in the past, how it works in other states, and what is at stake, if anyone should have any questions.
Brett, I only have one question, and I don't even know if you have this information, but any sense of how, what amount of dollars has been spent here in Tiverton coming out of this?
In the last fiscal year, I doubt much, if any. But in past years, I believe the Bourne Mill was awarded a Historic Tax Credit, if I'm not mistaken.
Yep.
If it wasn't, it would have been, it would have qualified. Typically, the Historic Tax Credit Program is coupled with other tax credit programs and state and federal subsidies for the development, redevelopment of historic residential, historically commercial structures that are adaptively reused into residential structures, and also adaptively reusing commercial structures for other purposes. You know, it's a direct tax credit, dollar-for-dollar tax credit based on the qualified basis of the historic rehabilitation work.
Are there any downsides?
Not that I know of.
Okay.
But I've got a sort of a horse in this race, it's part of what I do for a living. The biggest challenge in Rhode Island for developing, developing properties with tax credits has been the competing, the competing states that surround us have much more robust and active tax credit programs, and until 2013, when they changed the tax credit allocations from federal government, it was a very small amount of money. It's now doubled in size for the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program on the federal level. We do not have a state Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program. Massachusetts currently does. Massachusetts also has a $50 million Historic Tax Credit Program that has, I think it's in its second or third year of a five-year test period, and it will likely be re-upped after five years. So, you know, I guess I understand that it's $52 million. I think if you look at the figures, there were, was somewhere in the range of $180 million of, is it $180 million? I can't find it now. $180 million of private spending was underway, and I'm trying to, it's not on here, I don't think, but I remember in my head that something like three times as much was, that was awarded, was requested, or could have qualified, which is an important component to the demand of a lot of these structures. And it helps to adaptively reuse historic structures for affordable housing and for other commercial uses, because the basis of cost is lower, which drives down the cost of the development, which drives down, you know, I mean, it's how the subsidy works. But without, without successful and committed programs like the Historic Tax Credit Program and the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program, and the New Market Tax Credit Program, and the Green Energy Tax Credit Program, or Renewable Energy Tax Credit Program, it's more difficult to do business for developers in the state of Rhode Island when, in Massachusetts and Connecticut, they have very active and very robust, and they really, when you're developing a project, the capital stack has too many holes in it, then the project's not feasible. This is one, this is one of those holes that gets filled, and it incentivizes developers to repurpose historic structures, which is both economically more viable and also culturally significant. So that's all.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we support a town resolution in support of the Rhode Island Historic Tax Credit Program as outlined in item 2A, as well as support the Coalition for Neighborhood and Economic Renewal as described in item G2B.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion to remain in second, all those in favor?
They haven't, they haven't responded to my request.
I would just...
You can use your discretion to do it.
Okay, proposed ordinance amendment to Chapter 59 of the Code of Ordinances. Planning Department Public Hearing scheduled for July 14. Who's speaking on this?
This was coming from the last council meeting, where the administrator had presented a memorandum, requests to basically put into the code the aspect of the town planner, since it's not anywhere in the Code of Ordinances. So I prepared a draft ordinance, it already has been advertised since you had previously approved it, but wanted to give you the copy of the draft. And so it would be on, for the 14th on public hearing.
Do you need any action from us on this?
Nope, just presenting it to you, getting it out there to the public.
Thank you. Proposed ordinance for the licensing of shooting galleries for public hearings scheduled July 28.
Another item you asked for me to do at the last meeting, after our discussion about shooting galleries or shooting ranges, I've prepared a draft ordinance, it was done fairly quickly, so there may well be tweaks that need to be made to it, but it gives a basic outline of the requirements applying...